Well, good morning Wichita and welcome to all of you here at City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. With us today is Rabbi Shmulek Greenberg of Shabbat Luvotvich of Wichita to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to stand for both. Rabbi?
I brought my helpers here with me. I would like to begin this prayer by asking my children to do an act of kindness to put a dollar in the charity box. Almighty God, Sovereign of the Universe, as we approach the Jewish holiday of Passover, Saturday evening, April 12th, let us invoke the ancient lessons of Passover today. We pray that we always ensure that the meaning of Passover becomes visible in our daily lives. The biblical narrative of the Exodus is the story of the Israelites being redeemed from Egypt. The biblical Hebrew name for Egypt is Mitzrayim, which means limitations and boundaries. Today, we are all enslaved to personal limitations and we pray to be delivered from these obstacles that limit our potential to create a better future for ourselves, our families, our city, and the entire world. We pray to be grateful for what we have and rejoice in what we can become. Let us pass over our personal shortcomings and let us rise from despair to freedom. Let us be inspired by the shining example of the Lubavitcher Rabbi Rabbi Shneurson who taught that every individual and in fact, every individual action has an impact on the entire universe. The Rebbe emphasized the importance of education and good character and instilled the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people in America and across the globe. The Rebbe taught that education in general should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, rather, the educational system must pay more attention, indeed, the main attention, to the building of character with emphasis on moral and ethical values. Almighty God bless Mayor Lilly Wu and the honorable members of this distinguished council. Give them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. May our city serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life. May Wichita help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance so that America is truly one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let us say amen.
Thank you Rabbi and your two children. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meetings, March 18th, 2025 and March 25th, 2025.
Are there any corrections? I see none. I approve the minutes of the regular meetings for March 18th and March 25th of 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next items.
Awards and Proclamations. The proclamations this week are Child Abuse Prevention Month, Arab American Heritage Month, and Crime Victims Rights Week.
Can I please ask the members of the Kansas Children's Service League to please come forward and any council members who would like to join me at the front? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members as well as our nation's most vulnerable resource, helping to shape the future of Wichita. Positive childhood experiences, or PCES, like loving caregivers and safe, stable nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, or ACES, to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. Childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U.S. and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Whereas prevention is possible because of the partnerships created between families, prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and governments. Whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and minds through storytelling and sharing. We're committed to advocating systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in the country." Thank you for inviting us today and for signing the proclamation declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm Rachel Harper, the Assistant Director of the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Chapter at Kansas Children's Service League. Kansas was the first state to have its own chapter 49 years ago. KCSL is also the Kansas Chapter of Circle of Parents and a multi-system of Healthy Families America. April has been recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month since 1983. The blue pinwheel became the symbol for child abuse prevention in 2008. The pinwheel represents the healthy, happy childhoods that we all desire to see. Each year, KCSL coordinates statewide activities and offers support to local community efforts to help spread awareness, foster community action, and promote policies that ensure the safety and well-being of children and families. The theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month this year is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention. We at KCSL are committed to a future where every child grows up safe, loved, and full of hope. Prevention is a shared responsibility. Families, communities, policymakers, and organizations must work together to provide economic and social support, including affordable childcare, paid leave, and financial stability. Community-based solutions, ensuring access to local resources and networks, and stronger prevention policies with investments that uplift families before harm occurs. Prevention isn't just about avoiding harm, it's about creating opportunities for families to thrive. Positive childhood experiences, including stable relationships and nurturing environments, help children thrive and mitigate adverse childhood experiences, or ACES. Prevention is hard work, but it is also heart work. And to celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month, you can help plant a pinwheel garden, a visual reminder of the world. We want for all children to grow up happy, healthy, and prepared to succeed. You can also join us in wearing blue on Friday, April 4th, for National Wear Blue Day. You can participate in Child Abuse Prevention, Prevent Child Abuse Americas Nationwide Digital Action Day on April 9th. Contact members of Congress to advocate for increased support and funding for child abuse prevention programs. Please reach out to Kansas Children's Service League for more details. Also, you can follow Kansas Children's Service League on social media and we will be using the hashtag Powered by Hope for all Child Abuse Prevention Month posts. At this time, I would like to invite any members of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention to introduce yourself and your agency.
Good morning, I'm Becky Tittle with the City of Wichita.
I'm Kim Osborne with Kansas Children's Service League.
Lori Chandler with the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Sarah Robinson with the Urban League of Kansas.
I'm Ashley Coleman, I'm with the Department for Children and Family and also the Mayor of Kijai.
I'm Lindsay Hall, I'm a volunteer for CASA of Sedgwick County.
I'm Jenny Williams, I'm with CASA of Sedgwick County.
I am Amber Coleman, I'm an Advocate Supervisor with CASA of Sedgwick County.
I'm Courtney Price-Dukes and surprise, I'm with CASA of Sedgwick County.
We're all here, CASA really wanted to represent today, so I'm Kim Gerstenkorn, I'm the Executive Director with CASA of Sedgwick County.
And so we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you. May I please ask the Arab America Foundation to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions, including resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed to strengthen our country. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to every aspect of American society, including medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, and culture. Whereas the celebration of Arab American ancestry and cultural heritage educates neighbors and counters misconceptions and stereotypes of ethnic groups. Whereas Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month in the city of Wichita and encourages all citizens to celebrate the contributions made by Arab Americans."
Good morning Wichita. Mayor Wu, council members, thank you for this proclamation recognizing April as Arab American Heritage Month. Arab Americans have contributed to every part of American life and this recognition means a lot to our community. On behalf of the Arab American Foundation and all Arab Americans of Wichita, we appreciate your support in celebrating our heritage and the common values we all share. Thank you.
I would like to ask the city of Wichita's Law Department to please come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving negative and lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. Whereas this year's theme of kinship is a call to action to recognize that shared humanity should be at the center of supporting all survivors and victims of crime by reminding supporters of the strength that comes from connection, the importance of listening to every voice, and the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. Whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support services and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. Whereas kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy and through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through 12th, 2025, as Crime Victims Rights Week in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to build connections, stand in kinship with survivors, and create a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone."
Thank you Mayor. On behalf of the organizations present, I wanted to thank City Council for recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week. The providers present, as well as other organizations throughout the city, work tirelessly to help crime victims' voices be heard. Through the National Crime Victims Rights Week, we honor crime victims and survivors, recognize the providers and volunteers who provide critical services to victims of crime, and raise awareness about crime victims' rights and services. With us today here are, if you'd come forward, our Jere Greer of Department of Corrections, Kansas Department of Corrections, Alex Carter, Kelly Sykes, and Ali Alguera, of the City of Wichita Prosecutor's Office, Tina Peck of Hope Medical, Hina Charles of Violence Impact Integration Program, Michelle Blanc and Heather Dean of the Wichita Police Department Victim Advocate Services, and Jordan Martin of WASAC. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next items.
Public Agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda, other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Kelly Ake, Food Trucks Licensing and Enforcement.
Good morning. I am Kelly Ake, my address is...do I have to give the full address?
You can just say your district.
Honestly, I don't know. I'm four. Okay, thank you. Okay, so today I'm here to talk about the food trucks within the city of Wichita for city licensing. There are currently 220 registered trucks in Wichita and if you take the current city license at $350, that's $77,000 a year. There are so many unlicensed trucks that, I mean, something has got to be done. One, having a current license means that you're on the up and up and you're doing what you need to do and it just makes it unfair for us that are doing the right thing, okay? Also, with the $350 city license, to my knowledge, we cannot just go roll up on a city street and just start serving. So, I mean, what are we really paying for? Because everywhere that we go to serve, we have to be on some type of private property. Sorry, I'm really nervous. And then if it was enforced, the licensing, how much more could the city be making to potentially pay somebody to go out and police the trucks that are not being legit with a city license? I will say this, Captain Ake and Chief Ortiz, or how do you say his name? Okades, has come to several meetings and tried to educate us on the new licensing that came out this current year with the sticker, the inspections, they've created a fire coalition with other surrounding towns, which has really helped. And then it's easier to identify with a sticker in your window. So, he's been great. And he is my point of contact, like if I have questions or I say, hey, there's currently a truck sitting off of 21st and Amadon that has, they're selling alcohol, that is not legal from a truck. And I know that he's been there to look at it, I believe, he can speak on that, but I believe he's been there. But they just continue to sell. One, if it's illegal for them to sell alcohol out of their truck, I mean, why is the city not trying to enforce that? Not only beyond just the food trucks, you have so many people setting up with tents selling food. Are they licensed? They have no way to wash their hands? Do they have liability insurance? I mean, these are all things that us as food truckers, we have to spend to be able to be legit. Then you get traveling trucks from out of town that come in with no licensing and they're just have lines out the wazoo, which I want everybody to be able to make money. If you're doing it right and you're doing it fair and equally and you're paying your dues basically, then I'm all for it. I mean, it could be a great living to be had. And then being able to park downtown. Like I know there's a lot of other larger cities that have food truck rows for like when their bar districts get out, there's no place downtown that we could offer that. And I know that the police probably want those people to get out of there to clear the areas. But I mean, even if you cut the timeframe frame off at 2:00 a.m. to where the bars are closing, but I mean, people leave bars at all hours of the time or all hours of the evening, so why not allow us to be able to be down there to capture that income? Special events, so I don't find it, this is my personal opinion, and I did not come to the March Madness this year, but how does the city charge a $750 fee for your food truck to be at Nafsker Park when we already pay a city license? I mean, to me, that's double dipping. You don't charge brick and mortars that are in that area, so I'm not sure why you're capitalizing on a food truck in the way that you are. And then also, like city parks, we have to have permission to go to some of those, but we pay for a city license, so I'm not quite sure where we can draw those boundaries a little bit in our favor. That's really all I got, because my time's up.
Thank you very much Kelly. We have several council members that have questions or comments. We'll begin with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you Mayor Kelly, thank you for coming today. You are in my district, so I will follow up with a lot of your concerns as well. I've been in this job a little bit over a year and every day there's something new and I can tell you that I haven't investigated food truck licensing in the past year, but I'll look into it, I'll meet with the chief and look at some information and try and do a follow-up. I believe I have your contact information here. Before you leave, if you could leave your email with the clerk, I'll make sure to respond back to you as well. Hopefully a component of it is just education for individuals that are especially trying to maybe start a business, but they don't know about the licensing, so how can we better educate individuals and maybe proactively go out there? But I appreciate you raising these concerns and this is a good example of public comment, bringing something that we were not aware of, bringing it to our attention. So thank you for being here and you did great despite being nervous.
Oh my gosh, thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you.
Oh, my bad, I'm so sorry.
No, you're okay. Actually, my question is for staff. Isaac, I hate to put you on the spot, I have a couple of questions about event permitting. Sorry. I'd rather just have you say it in front of everybody if you're able to. Can you address a couple of the questions about special events like in Nafsker Park and what that looks like for the food trucks?
So for Nafsker, just strictly for the NCAA tournament, we allowed food trucks to register online, first come, first served. So the first five vendors to sign up and pay $750 were our five food trucks and that filled up within two business days.
Okay, and what does it, how is that different from outside the tournament? Like you just apply for the license?
Correct, yeah, you just apply for the license. Now, food trucks can't operate within, I believe it's 400 square, or 400 feet of a licensed community event without permission from that community event. The only exception is if they're on private property, they do not have to, they can still be within 400 feet of a community event. Does that answer your question?
I think so. And is the normal fee outside of the tournament also $750 at Nafsker Park?
It is not, no. That was a one-off that we did.
What is the normal fee?
It would vary event to event.
So there's, you're saying there's no fee?
Now, if I wanted to go up there and serve lunch today, I can go up there and serve lunch for free.
Okay, I think that answers a couple of my questions. And then Captain Ake, sorry. Thank you so much, appreciate it Isaac. Thank you so much, sorry to put you on the spot. Could you just address how you, I know that you guys go through the licensing, but how do you enforce the permits?
Yep, and also for full disclosure, fourth cousin, maybe, not 100% of her related, but I do make sure that I do not inspect her food truck, that there's no conflict of interest here when it comes to that.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
If you could, now that I got that out of the way, if you could repeat your question for me.
Sure, I'm just curious, how do you guys approach trucks to make sure that they have proper permitting and so on?
Okay, so we do have, thanks to the new ordinance and change with, like we addressed before with the stickers and licensing process, and we do have a list when we go up, if it's a city event like Nafsker Park or some of the other city-sponsored events, I'll get notification from Isaac and then I will show up or Chief Okades will show up to these events and we'll look to see that all the food trucks are licensed. We show up on a regular basis to Final Friday and some of the others, because in order to be in those city, special city events, they do have to pay to be part of that. So we want to make sure everyone there, one is licensed and they're also on the list. So if they're not on the list, then we do actually have them. So, if they're not on the list, then we do actually have them leave.
Okay.
When we do come across other food trucks, just whether or when we're out and about, it's going to be a lot easier now if we can see the sticker and be able to know instantly that they're licensed or not. If I don't see the sticker, and then we'll approach them and talk to them about it. And so, we do get from different people, like, I'll get it from Facebook saying, hey, this food truck is going to be here, I don't see them. I'll go visit them, talk to them, and say, hey, I don't see that you're licensed, this is what you need to do. We temporarily... I will temporarily shut them down until they get the process done. One of the processes is the full inspection from our department, and they cannot operate until they have our approval, plus other city approvals that they have to go through as far as legal in the department and getting that paid for.
Awesome. Could you email me or us the link for, just for the food trucks to get their license, just in case anybody asks us? Since I represent Old Town and Downtown and Delano, there's lots of different areas that often have food trucks, it would be nice for us to just be able to send that off to them. Maybe some people don't know. I don't know, but I'd like to have that at my fingertips if you'd be willing. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it, and thank you for coming to speak.
Any other questions for me?
The next speaker is Maggie Allen. General feedback on previous city council meeting.
Hello. I'm here today as an ally to the trans community and to offer my feedback on the city council meeting that took place on March 18th. First, a little history. International Transgender Day of Visibility was created in 2010 by Rachel Crandall Crocker of Transgender Michigan in response to the overwhelming majority of media stories about transgender people being focused on misinformation and violence. She helped to create a day where people could celebrate the lives and accomplishments of transgender people while simultaneously acknowledging that due to discrimination, not every trans person can or wants to be visible. Okay, so, two weeks ago, when you, Mayor Lilly Wu, chose to not read the proclamation for Transgender Day of Visibility, not only was this a blatant shirking of your mayoral duties, it completely flies in the face of your campaigning on a platform of inclusion and transparency. To borrow a phrase from another person that was there, it was virtue signaling just to the people and groups who are okay with erasing trans existence. In the two weeks since, you have been the one spreading misinformation to the public about the meaning of Transgender Day of Visibility. You say you don't believe trans people's gender identities are any of your business, but the hundreds of people who came to Transgender Day of Visibility events in Wichita, Sunday and Monday, are your business. They're your constituents, we are your constituents. While other cities are declaring themselves sanctuaries for LGBTQ people, you have let us all know that a Wichita led by Lilly Wu is not a sanctuary for anyone but your donors and allies. Trans people are not anyone's political talking point, they're living, breathing people from all walks of life who represent an evolution of humanity and the promise of a future where we all have more rights, and everyone is guaranteed life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness regardless of their gender identity. Trans existence is sacred, eternal, and worthy of protection. Shame on you and your fellow nasang council members for not being willing to acknowledge that fact. And just to use the rest of my time, considering the fact that we had proclamations for child abuse prevention and Crime Victims Rights Week, I would like to acknowledge that trans people are both statistically higher, more likely to be both victims of child abuse and victims of crime. So, it's an additional reason why it's important to have a Transgender Day of Visibility, because they're an extremely at-risk minority. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Yes, the third speaker is Becca Johnson. On behalf of Friends of Kansas Wildlife Exhibit, update on the exhibit's work and ongoing pagoda project in Riverside Park.
Good morning, Council. I'm Becca Johnson, 429 West Central. I've been at this podium before as a staff member, but never as a public member, so thank you for letting me be here. Outside of my duties for the city, I spend a lot of time at the Kansas Wildlife Exhibit, which is one of the jewels of Riverside Park, playing with a bunch of animal ambassadors, and now sit on the board of the Friends of the Kansas Wildlife Exhibit, doing work to help expand their education and community-oriented goals. I am going to yield most of my time to Lynn Rogers, our president, so he can tell you about several initiatives we're doing.
Thank you, Becca. Good afternoon... Or good morning. I believe this is the first time I've ever approached the city council, so it's a pleasure to be here. I represent the Friends of the Wildlife. We have several of our board members here. The Friends were started in 2023, and our job is to enhance and encourage more use of the Wildlife Exhibit. Attendance there from 2023 to 2024 went from 26,000 participants to over 40,000, oftentimes because of many of the projects, the story times, and the special events that we have. You may want to put on your calendar, April 26th, that's Upchuck, the Turkey Vulture's birthday. He's our oldest ambassador, 31 years of age. We will also in May be starting our second year of Trash Panda. That's where we encourage kids to pick up trash with grabbers and all those kind of things. And last year, we did hundreds of pounds of trash that was picked up from the park. We're going to expand that this year to multiple parks throughout the city. We have sponsors with both Freddy's and with Dylan's. The other thing that's most exciting that we're going to be presenting is the renovation project that we're starting for the pagoda, the Japanese pagoda. Originally built in 1911 as a concession stand, we think it's the oldest park building in Riverside Park, as well as maybe even the entire city. It was converted to bathrooms in the mid-'20s, and then basically used as storage until the 1960s and today, but in the '60s it was used for a couple of years to start the Wichita Zoological Society and the start of the Sedgwick County Park. We're going to be hopeful turning that into a multipurpose room, excuse me, something that can be used as a classroom for the Wildlife Exhibit. Hundreds, hundreds of buses and kids come each summer and each spring to the park, and there isn't really a place for them to eat, there isn't a place for them to sit and talk to the staff at the Wildlife Exhibit. So, we're starting the process of raising $200,000 to do that. We've got in the process of an MOU with the city and the Parks Department. We'll be introducing that once we get that finalized. We will be taking donations and seeking folks that can help us on that. We think it'll be a great place in Riverside Park, a great addition, and again, it'll expand the use of the Wildlife Exhibit.
Thank you. It is spring, which means we also do have new ambassadors coming to the exhibit, because spring brings baby animals. And so, we did bring one of our baby turtles, if you all would like to take a photo with an animal ambassador. We would have brought Upchuck, but he's not a very well-behaved guest, and he gets his name for a reason, so we didn't think you'd want that in council chambers. But our turtle is right here. Just let him walk around.
No, if he could walk around, I would definitely have to chase him eventually. But this is also one of our state animals you can find throughout the city, throughout the state. This is a baby box turtle. Thank you all.
Thank you, Becca. We have... No more. We had several on the board, but it looks like no one wanted... Now we do again. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Becca, for the presentation. And, Mr. Rogers, one quick question.
Sure.
When the kids do the Trash Panda pickup, do they have to wear raccoon masks?
They don't. We were hoping we can maybe enhance with some T-shirts, but they have gloves and vests and grabbers, so they're protected and taken care of. But it's kind of fun, exciting to see, but that may be something we want to add, so...
Yeah.
I do believe we still have some masks.
There are masks available.
Yes.
If you need a raccoon mask, like, the raccoon masks are an option. We do have a collection of them. In general, the kids just pick up trash and get a popsicle.
I might need two of those.
Okay.
We used them for our Halloween celebration, and I think we have a number of other animal choices, too. And I guess to remind everybody, too, that the feeding is daily at noon, and we have hundreds of people come to that, particularly during spring break, but it's a great thing to enhance. We work with a lot of the hotels and different organizations around the city to encourage people to come. We think it's one of the best examples of how the community can work together.
Awesome. And then, last point, although he's a private citizen now, it's always great to have the former Lieutenant Governor of Kansas in the chambers.
It's nice to be retired, let me put it that way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for coming to present. Very biased, but I'm very excited to see some new ideas and renovated ideas in Riverside Park, so thank you for all of you guys taking the initiative and all of the other things that you do throughout the year, so thanks for coming.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. You talked about having to chase that turtle around. How quick is that turtle?
I mean, I couldn't tell you exactly. I mean, I can bring him to you if you would like to see how quickly he's moving.
And they don't really like cold weather, so...
For the record, Councilman Hoheisel, I had a turtle when I was younger that ran away from me, and I lost it, so...
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank you for all your work, Riverside Park and the exhibit. I take my grandkids there, and they absolutely love it, and feeding time is really exciting. So, thank you very much.
Now it's Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have no more, so thank you, Becca, as well as Lynn, for that presentation. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Eva Glancy, Wildflower Community School, transgender validation.
Hi, my name is Eva Glancy. I would like to thank Councilmembers Johnson, Ballard, Hoheisel, and Tuttle for signing the proclamation for Trans Day of Visibility. I go to Wildflower School at 1650 North Fairview in District 6.
Hi, Council. I'm Molly Stevenson. I'm Eva and Ash's teacher and the founder at Wildflower Community School. My students are wonderful and civically engaged and attentive people, and this issue in particular is near and dear to our heart in our community. Eva and Ash had some thoughts to share with you guys today. One of the thoughts in particular is we would like to have a conversation, Mayor Wu, with our students and you, about the city's ongoing commitment to inclusion. Having a diverse and inclusive city is good business. There's lots of data about that. Trans people, as Maggie shared with us earlier, are one of the most at-risk groups of people, really in the whole country. Trans youth in particular have some of the worst mental health outcomes of any population group across the country. Our little private school is a place where we have a lot of representation of the gender expansive and LGBTQIA community. We are excited to be able to support that community, to recognize them, to just be a good acknowledgement to both their validity and their existence. Eva, Ash, and other students, we've been in Topeka, we've talked about similar things with other lawmakers, and how the things that get decided in rooms like this have real implications for the health and well-being of our young people, of the rest of our city. But particularly, I think as an educator, it's important that you all hear that having one affirming person in a gender expansive student's life, so affirming being saying their chosen name and pronouns, recognizing their space for existence, reduces the risk of suicide and other adverse mental health outcomes by 40%. It is a huge preventative factor, it's a huge protective factor, and we have made it a bit of our mission in our school, and especially in our secondary classroom, to make sure that we share that data. Would you like to share anything else? No? All right. Thank you for hearing us today, and Eva, thank you for letting me jump in on your time. I'm glad you're here. Yes, thank you, Councilmembers.
Eva and Molly, I believe, thank you for speaking. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you so much for being brave, and especially having our gauge... Our youth engaged at any level makes me really happy to see, so thank you for being here.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I still get nervous talking up here every single week, so please relay to them that we understand, we feel it here, and it takes a lot of bravery to get up here and to speak in front of everybody, especially on some of these more sensitive issues, so please relay that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I, too, just wanted to share for Eva that I get nervous as well, but also that I appreciate the courage shown to come up here and speak whatever she wanted to say, what was on her mind, and just want to encourage her going forward when she sees this, that she matters, and her voice matters. And I'm appreciative that she was willing to step forward and use it, and want to encourage her to do so as she gets older.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. To Eva, I believe in the hallway, and to Ash, I just want to say that you're welcome in this place. This is your space as much as it is anybody in our communities. I want you to feel in this community that you're welcome, that you're heard, and that you're seen as well. And so, thank you for being here, thank you for speaking out, especially as young people. We need to engage more young people in the process, and so, thank you for being involved today, and thank you for being here. And don't be nervous in this space. I know it can be incredibly nervous at the bench, but up here, you're not going to seek judgment, and so, thank you for being here.
I see no more council members. I will just add to Teacher Molly, as well as Eva outside, this is a respectful community. This is an inclusive community, and having dialogue is important. And my favorite part about being mayor, since I'm an ambassador for this community, is to go out to schools. My favorite part is going to schools with young people under the age of 18 who cannot vote, who have the desire to make a change in the world, and I would be open and happy to come and dialogue, and I would believe that any of our council members have that same opportunity. Anyone in the community can ask any council member, as well as the mayor, to speak at any school or classroom. All you have to do is go to the website, wichita.gov/citycouncil, and there are opportunities for that engagement, and I believe that more engagement and more dialogue is important. But having grown up in this community since I was eight years old, I can tell you, this is an inclusive community and a respectful community, and it will continue to be that way. Mr. Clerk, please call the next individual.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next individual.
Ash White, Wildflower Community School, transgender validation.
Hello, my name is Ash White, and I am a student at Wildflower Community School, District 6. I would like to start by saying thank you to Councilmembers Johnson, Ballard, Hoheisel, and Tuttle for voting for the Trans Day of Visibility proclamation. Trans Day of Visibility was celebrated Sunday in our school building, and it was a wonderful experience. Being able to express ourselves is incredibly important. This proclamation shows us that you care. I would like to ask for a meeting with Mayor Wu to talk about inclusion policies and practices to keep Wichita safe and inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ash, and again, like I said earlier, anytime that you want to engage with either councilmembers or the mayor, we get asked oftentimes to come to schools and have that engagement. Again, it's wichita.gov/citycouncil, and that is available to any school, homeschool as well. We want that engagement, and we like to hear from young people because, again, many of the decisions we make from this bench are for the future, and you are the future, all of the young people in our community. And just as a reminder, no rights were taken away from anyone based off of a proclamation. What this council does is a lot of resolutions, and that was not a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items 1 through 24.
Are there any items to be polled? I see none. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And all its items. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 31, 2025.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lohr, Department of Finance. Board of Bids and Contracts convened March 31, 2025, for the following items. Having technical difficulties, excuse me. For engineering, we have the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project Levy F Tow Drain Installation Phase 2 for Apex Excavating LLC in the amount of $594,305. For purchasing, we have the two 20-foot Flexwing mowers for McCullough Enterprises LLC doing businesses Wichita Tractor Company for $73,449.60. For airport, we have the snow and ice removal contract change order number 2 for SLM Incorporated doing business as Suburban Landscape Management for an amended amount of $72,500. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. This is our purchasing calendars of open opportunities for the public to engage in education with our small business resource partners and the city's hosted events, and these are open public opportunities out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and I recommend your approval.
Any questions for staff? I see none. I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 31, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I have one location for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement districts, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Clear Creek 3rd and 4th Editions located in District 2. On June 5, 2024, the City Council approved water, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to meet current market conditions and to reflect the phasing that they will be doing. It is recommended that the City Council approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. I move to approve the petitions for public improvement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Extension of lease for city-owned property at 303 North Mead.
John Filbrick, Development Services. Mayor and councilmembers, the item before you was a continuation of an item. From February 4, we had brought forth a lease extension for a space in the city-owned parking garage at the Old Town Cinemas. At the time that we brought it forth, council... let's see if this will move. There we go. Council had some concerns about the type of the lease, the lease term, and the lease rates. The item was deferred until April 1 in 2025, and we were instructed to try to negotiate a lease with a higher lease rate and pass through of the expenses. To date, the tenant has not agreed to the new lease terms. We are recommending that if the lease is not renegotiated by April 30, 2025, the lease become a holdover lease and that the tenant be requested to start paying 1 1/2 times the then-current rent, which would be $19.50 per square foot. The holdover term is consistent with the current lease. We will continue to receive rent on the lease, either through the negotiated new lease or through the holdover. If we do get a new lease, we will pay a 3% leasing commission to the property management company. They are working with the tenant to negotiate the new lease, and at this time, we recommend that we table the item, and when we get a new lease, we will bring it back to council for approval. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Only question I have, since there were no additional documents and we knew that this was going to be tabled for some time, can you address, when was this contract supposed to end specifically? Because I feel like it was already a holdover lease. Can you explain that?
This particular lease had a year-to-year clause, year-to-year term, so it would have ended December 31 of this year, or of 2024, but we initiated negotiations with the tenant for an extension in September. That item was polled for additional review and discussion. It was presented back to council on February 4, and so, we did not initiate the holdover penalties at that time because we were in negotiations to adjust the lease, and the determination to, you know, not move forward was, you know, based on the city's actions. But now, we've reached a point where we will consider the lease a holdover if we cannot negotiate a new lease.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. John, thank you. How long has this business been a tenant?
This tenant has been in occupancy, I want to say, since 2017.
And is the negotiation based on the changes in price, or, I mean, is that basically what the holdup is?
What we have done, we presented a lease for a new tenant on March 4, and that lease was predicated on a pass-through of operating expense of the triple-net lease. It had a shorter term. It was a three-year term with a two-year extension because there was some concern that the proposed extensions from February were five years. It also had a higher face rate. We were looking at $19 a foot, and then, that would be based on a $10 base and a $9 expense capture. That lease was approved, and so, we have presented basically those same terms to this tenant, and that is what they're looking at. And so, part of the concern is a higher rate, and then, the fact that we're changing. We were using a modified gross lease where we collected the money, we paid all the expenses, and here, we're going to a triple-net, and that's the tenant to want to think about that.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. John, how close do you think you are to getting this worked out with the tenant?
I really cannot say. They have not provided a lot of feedback, and in this particular case, you know, we're looking at a pretty significant jump in rent. This was a tenant that was at the low end of our rent range originally, and so, when we came back, we took them up $1 a foot and then $2 a foot in February, and that was pushed back and told we were deferring it. So, we're asking them to increase up to $19 a foot, so I'm not sure where they are.
I'm worried that we're going to lose a tenant and end up at 0. So, I encourage you to do everything you can to get to a lease rate with them. Those businesses have not rebounded COVID like other businesses have. Parking's important to them. Rent structure's important to them, so I am very worried about several tenants in that area. So, thanks for your work. I hope you can get it worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I will move to table this item. Will there be a date that we should... I just moved to table this item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Extension of lease for city-owned property at 307 to 309 North Mead.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is a second item from the deferral of February 4. This is a second tenant in the Old Town Cinemas retail. Basically, we're in the same situation. They're leasing 4,384 square feet. We have approached them with a... there we go. With a lease term and rate and rent very similar to the previous item. They are reviewing the lease. This particular lease has an expiration date on the year-to-year of April 30, so they're not a holdover tenant yet. Again, if we have not negotiated a new lease with them, starting in May, we will be looking at the 1 1/2 times penalty rent, which would be, in this particular case, $25.65 because they are paying $17 a square foot now. As before, we'll continue to receive rent from the tenant, and as before, we will pay a 3% leasing commission if we do negotiate a new lease. And it's recommended that the City Council also table this item.
Thanks, John. We'll begin with Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. John, and how long has this tenant been here?
This is one of the original tenants, so they have been there since about 2003.
I think it's important that we are looking at the different rent rates and different types of leases and such, but the last thing I want to do, too, is push all of these businesses out where everything is vacant. So, I appreciate you working hard on this to negotiate deals that work for everybody, or not deals, but leases that work for everybody. I'm hopeful that this new type of lease that we're looking at isn't potentially the problem. That's not my wheelhouse, so I don't know how to navigate all of that, but I hope that we are having fruitful conversations with the tenants because being a tenant since, you know, it started in 2003, I mean, that's a very long time, and I know that a lot of people, you know, go to those businesses, and like I said, the last thing I want to do is price people out to where Old Town is vacant. So, I appreciate your hard work on this, and when it's time to make a motion, since it's in my district, I'd be happy to do it.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I know both these tenants personally. I knew them before I was a city council. I always ask how business is, and they're always honest with me. I am worried. This one is at retirement age. Could just close it and get rid of the headache. But he likes the business. He likes the people, so I sure hope we can work something out. And of my four boys, three of them is their favorite place to go, so certainly hope they stay open.
I see no further questions. I'll just add one more, John. Again, this was spurred by the idea that we should be the best stewards of taxpayer dollars, and so, I want you, or in my opinion, you should be negotiating in the best interests of the City of Wichita, which would be the citizens of Wichita. And so, I think that this conversation is good. We want to make sure that when we have spaces that are owned by the public, which is everyone in this community, that we're negotiating in the best interests of its citizens. So, thank you very much, John, for continuing that work, and again, we want businesses to thrive, but not at the expense of the rest of the community. I will move to table this item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Applicant's Appeal of HPC 2025-8, demolition permit for 1416 and 1418 North Park Place.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Councilmember Ballard.
Mayor, why did you do that? I asked, when it was time to make a motion, since it was in my district, that I would like to make the motions, and you've done that two different times in the previous meeting on these two items in Old Town and then again today.
Councilmember Ballard, I simply motion to table the discussion.
Right, but I also, in my comments, well, number one, it says District 1 and it's District 6, but you did this in the meeting before, and I don't notice that you do that to other councilmembers. You typically let them make the motion for whose district it's in, except for me and specifically on these items, and I just said it a couple minutes ago. I work really hard in the district for my district, and I know you represent the whole city, but you do that to me and not to other councilmembers, and I don't appreciate it.
It is not of ill intent to not ask you to do the motion. It was simply to motion to table a discussion until further review by the rest of the staff. So, again, if you would like to motion, please go ahead and push that button.
Yeah. It's already done, and I did, but thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Applicant's Appeal of HPC 2025-8, demolition permit for 1416 and 1418 North Park Place.
Good morning. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department, here to present this item. So, this item is being heard today because the applicant, and in this case, it's the City of Wichita, M A B C D, is appealing the Wichita Historic Preservation Board's denial of issuing a demolition permit to remove the buildings at 1416 and 1418 North Park Place. This is a property conditions enforcement case, which has led to the condemnation and demolition. The property owners are deceased, and community stakeholders are... The property owners are deceased, and community stakeholders are seeking to rehabilitate the structures. An important note is that there is another item on today's agenda to consider condemnation of the property involving the conditions case, and that is immediately following this item. So in this case, as indicated, City of Wichita, MABCD, is appealing the Wichita Historic Preservation Board's denial. The Wichita Historic Preservation Board determined that the demolition would destroy or damage the historic buildings and denied the demolition permit. And a quick note that this was a review in anticipation of the city contractor applying for a demolition permit as part of that property conditions case. In terms of the process, this item is appearing before you for two reasons. The first is because of a 2022 agreement between the City of Wichita and the Kansas Historic Preservation Officer, and then the second part is because of the Wichita Municipal Code. The agreement between the Kansas Historic Preservation Officer and the City of Wichita allows for local review of projects instead of having to send them up to Topeka. As part of the agreement, the appeal for that local review goes to you all at the City Council. Likewise, the Wichita Municipal Code directs an appeal of the Wichita Historic Preservation Board to the City Council for demolitions of properties on the Wichita Register of Historic Places. So here's an aerial image of the property. There's a duplex that's on the property as well as two garage units that are in the rear of the property. In terms of the property background, the duplex is listed on the historic registers as a contributing building in the Park Place Fairview Historic District. Contributing classification means that the property adds to the historic association and architectural importance of the historic district. This property is listed on the National, State, and Wichita Historic Registers. So there's quite a bit of information here. I'll try and go through it briefly. So the staff report provides a detailed overview, or detailed review of the process to date. So in 1978 is when the historic district was created and this building was listed. In 2020, there were complaints submitted to MABCD due to the condition of the duplex building. Its staffs understanding that the owners passed away and the property conditions have eroded over time. After numerous notifications, communication attempts, and enforcement actions, the case was scheduled for consideration by the Building Code Standards and Appeals Board. On May 2nd of 2022, that board held a meeting and held a hearing on it, and they recommended that the City Council proceed with condemnation, demolition, removal of the dangerous structures on the property. Through 2022 and 2024, the Wichita Historic Preservation Board considered whether to approve demolition permits for the site and ultimately denied those. At those times, based on an organized effort by community members to gain ownership and repair the historically significant structure, staff did not pursue an appeal to the City Council of the Historic Preservation Board's decision. In 2025, after receiving renewed complaints regarding conditions on the property, staff took the case to the Wichita Historic Preservation Board for renew again, and the reason for this is because there's a very narrow window for applicants to appeal to take it from the Historic Preservation Board to the City Council. On February 10th, the Historic Preservation Board considered the application and again denied the permit. Members of the public were in attendance and spoke about their efforts to rehabilitate and acquire the duplex. On February 10th, that same day, the applicant submitted a letter appealing the decision, and in addition, on March, well, March of this year, city officials received additional information from community stakeholders about their continued efforts to maintain, rehabilitate, and acquire the structures. So slide nine. When reviewing a project, Wichita Historic Preservation Board reviews it using the Secretary of Interior's standards, and using those standards, again, they found that it would damage or destroy a historic place. As part of the appeal process, staff recommend the City Council here at this time that they hear from the applicant and any members of the public who wish to speak on this item. And in general, the City Council has a number of options, two significant options. One is to deny the demolition permit, and the second is to approve the permit and associated actions. The staff report reviews some possible options with the property. These are important because this is required if a letter is sent up to Topeka and the demolition permit is approved. Do nothing, so this is assuming that no other people or organizations maintain or improve the property. The property conditions are likely to erode, and it creates an opportunity for undesirable activities and potential health and safety issues. Another one is that a new owner takes ownership of the property and that they have the ability and the resources to rehabilitate the structure. This could be challenging and take time due to the probate process and others, and at this time, the property is eligible for tax sale or is coming up on that deadline very shortly due to unpaid taxes. So would make note of that. The third option is demolition, that the duplex is, the duplex and garages would be demolished, and again, this would remove the historic structures. Here's some photos of the subject site. Now, you'll see that there's snow on the ground, so these are not super recent. It's my understanding there's been some work that's been done to the property recently. This is photos from the surrounding area. Back to the aerial. So in general, again, the City Council has the options to deny, approve the permit, and again, because this is an appeal and not a zoning item, it is recommended the City Council take public comment on this item. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, the minutes here, they're really pretty basic, so it's hard to really get a kind of a grasp of what the Historic Preservation Board thought about this. Would you say that, not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, would you say that the concern was more about whether or not this process is acceptable, like they're just looking at the basic language of this, or did they also have concerns about the upkeep, but they just see that this matches?
Sure.
Kind of the process here.
Yeah. As far as, a couple of questions in there. I'd like to respond about the minutes and just let you know that we have previously, I've received feedback from you all about the quality of the minutes and how robust or lacking that they are. We are changing the process that we're using for doing minutes, so in the future, I'm hopeful that they, those will be improved, and you will see that improvement. Second thing is, in terms of the Historic Preservation Board's dialogue and debate on this one discussion, they are constrained in how they review it because they're, again, they're reviewing it against the Secretary of the Interior standards, and a demolition clearly will have an impact to a historic property. So their review, they really don't have much choice other than to find that it will damage or destroy a historic property. Now, there was discussion and dialogue. There has been. At each of the Historic Preservation Board meetings, there have been comments from the public about their efforts to improve the property and acquire it, but again, it's a complicated process, and it takes some time to work through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for staff?
I do have a couple of questions. I wanted to know, I saw in the actual packet that there are unpaid taxes on this property. Can you talk about the value of this property at the current minute, as well as the back taxes that they still owe?
Yes. In terms of the value of the property, I'm unaware of that. In terms of the back taxes, I am going to look to MABCD staff and see if they might have some insights on that.
It's a little over nine thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And I believe that's including the abatement.
And the value of this property?
So MABCD staff are indicating approximately twenty-one thousand dollars at current appraisal.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment.
Mayor, council members, my name's Diana Fisher. My address is 1563 Southwest Butler Road, Benton, Kansas. I'm a niece of Alma Nizes and Arlene Spurling, who were the owners of the duplex located at 1416 and 1418 Park Place. I have lived out of the area until recently. I was named the executor of Aunt Arlene's will. A little bit of background, Aunt Alma purchased the duplex because she wanted a historic home. She'd lived over in the hillside area, and her home there had been taken under eminent domain, and she was bound determined she was going to live in a historic home, and so she bought the duplex. She lived in one side of the duplex and rented the other side out. She was active in the Midtown Citizens Association. She loved sharing with the family, at family dinners, what the Midtown citizens were doing and how she was so thrilled to be there in the neighborhood. She talked about, you know, the activities they had. She talked about the fundraising the association did. She loved gardening, so her yard was always full of flowers. Unfortunately, Aunt Alma became ill in 2002 with cancer, and she invited her sister, which is my Aunt Arlene, to move into the other side of the duplex. Aunt Alma passed away in 2005. Aunt Arlene inherited the duplex. Neither of these aunts had any children. Aunt Arlene continued to live in the duplex until she became ill in 2010. Aunt Arlene ended up in assisted living in Pittsburgh, Kansas. She'd exhausted all of her funds, and she was required to have Medicaid and state aid take care of her while she lived in assisted living. At the time she passed away, we understood the state then placed a lien on the duplex. Therefore, we did not probate her estate at that time. A couple months ago, I was approached by a representative of the Historic Midtown Citizens Association, asking if they could acquire the duplex to be able to restore it. That was wonderful news to our family, who hated to see the property be destroyed or demolished, but knew there were no funds available in the estate to restore it. So we have engaged with the Historic Midtown Citizens Association, and we hope you will work with them to be able to restore this duplex and save it from demolition. Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, I guess, for staff. Maybe two quick questions. So is this is going through the probate process currently?
Councilmember Hoheisel, Chris Labram, Director of MABCD. My understanding is that has not yet begun. I do have indication, I have evidence that they've, the group has retained a lawyer and has begun that process, but I don't think they have an official case filed at this point.
How long would it, does it take to go through a probate process if there's not really any opposition or family members to squabble about dividing it up?
That can vary greatly. The lawyer involved has indicated he believes he can do it within a hundred to 120 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Barbara Riggs. I live at 1412 slash 1414 North Park Place, next door to this house that's being discussed. Three and a half years ago, the city came with a great crew and boarded everything up, and I was freaked out. I asked the lady, "How long is it going to be like this?" She says, "Oh, two or three years," which I couldn't believe. It's three and a half years now since the house has been boarded up and this continual deterioration, hot and cold, running thieves. Took so much stuff, squatters. At this point, that has all died down due to the efforts, I think, of the Midtown Citizens Association, the historic people who have come to clean up the yard, which shows that somebody cares. Throughout this whole three and a half years, I have, I've, I've lived with the embarrassment of having a house like that next to me. My guests come, people come, and where you live, this place looks horrible. And I would tell them that the people who lived there had such misfortune that they, that isn't something anybody would want, and that we should feel merciful to the people that let it get into this condition. It seemed like there were three options, one of which was to destroy the house, one of which was to, and then have it empty, or have somebody build something that looks like shipping containers in our historic district. And believe me, I have great fear of that, having something horrible built there, and then also someone who would restore the house to its, to its former condition. I am greatly in favor of having the house be restored. It appears that the Historic Board is working on financing and the ability to do this work. I, I actually moved in to the house I live in thirty-nine years ago today, April the 1st, 1986. I moved in, and I didn't know where I was. I just found a neat place to live. I found out later, being in a historic district, and I was just always so proud that I lived in that area. I just really loved being in that area with old houses and people who cared about their properties. It seems like, it seems like it's important for historic areas to be maintained and to be, to give us a sense of our history. I know that the city really likes to tear stuff down and build modern structures, but I don't, and many people in that area also do not, do not appreciate that. In honor of the two ladies that I knew very, very well, who would be, would be hurt beyond words to see the condition of the property, I would, I would maintain that, that it should be restored. And it appears that the Historic Board of Wichita has worked on getting financing for that, and I would desperately, desperate, I don't know, I would sincerely ask you to consider their proposal to restore the house, to make it look beautiful again, and I just ask for that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I have several questions before we continue. It's not for you, Barbara, for staff. First and foremost, to clear, correct the record, actually, it is not the back taxes that's nine thousand. The back taxes is a total of four thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents. MABCD assessment and cleanup is nine thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Are there any other items within that property that still need to be accounted for so that when the individuals that are trying to restore this specific property know exactly how much they need to raise?
So, good morning again, Mayor, and yes, thank you. Great question. So the total taxes, as you stated, are nine thousand seven sixty-two ninety-six at this time, of which four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven ninety-three are MABCD-related assessments. There has been an abatement done very recently since this time. We do not have final billing on that yet, but it will be between eight hundred and one thousand dollars that will be added to that total bill.
And how many police calls and fire calls have been called out to this specific address?
There have been no fire responses. There have been twelve police responses over the last five years, and those were based on vandalism taking place at the, at the structure.
Thank you. We'll continue with public comment.
Hello. Good morning. I'm Gretchen Ike. I live at 1536 North Park Place, a block north of this property, and I've lived there for about twelve years. I would like to support the previous speakers and urge that you not demolish this building. We've seen in Long Park Place many developers picking up properties and then turning them into multi-occupancy apartment buildings that, and I have one on, I have two north of me, and that, that has been a serious problem because the upkeep of the property goes down as you increase the numbers of rental properties and divided properties in the neighborhood. So I'd like to encourage you to go with the inexpensive cost of rehabilitating this property. It actually isn't very much. I mean, I'm thinking several of us neighbors could go together if we'd even known about this. this and, and purchase that property to make it, to make it, you know, pay the back taxes and, and the fees and rehabilitate it so that, you know, we have so many structures in Wichita that are boarded up and that have been boarded up for years and years and years. I lived in northeast for 18 years, and the, we could never get anybody to, to go after the owners of those properties and take them over and rehabilitate them. So this is a great opportunity. I mean, I've never understood that, why that never seemed to be possible. Absentee landlords. In this case, you don't have an absentee landlord. You have two elderly ladies who have died and who didn't have the resources to leave money for the upkeep of the property. So it's a prime opportunity to keep this in, in, in the hands of people who will be owner, an owner-occupied situation and that will be overseen by the Historic Preservation Board. So I'd really urge you to go that route rather than demolition. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. According to the 2024 tax statement, the amount currently owed, the minimum payment is $8,816.84 to redeem the property. The full amount payment is $9,845.96 that is due by May the 12th. I also had the 2024 tax statement, if paid after May 12th, it would be $9,953.68 to be paid to redeem the property. The known specials for 2025 are $1,697.61, and they are due by August 26th of 2025.
We'll continue with public comment.
Hi, everybody. My name's Susie Cunningham, and I live in Midtown. I'm only a few blocks west of there. I just came up for a moment, I wrote you a pretty long letter, but I wanted to address resources from the police because they really haven't spent hardly any. I went on LexisNexis, which is a link off the community policing page, and those are not specific to an address. They are identified as 1400 block by either single family or a category of commercial. That, if, if property was being reported, recorded, and given a case number, it would be duplex multifamily or abandoned property. Those are the categories that would apply. Let's see, I have the, so far in 2025, there's been no reports on the entire block. There was only one report on the block in 2024, and there were three in 2023. And like I said, none were identified specifically to a specific address, but none were, were in the category of duplex multifamily or abandoned. I guess that what's that means is we're not using a lot of city resources on this. I'd like to go back to that picture of the pillar with the big gaping hole in it, if I could. Could we get the, can we get that up? Or if, do you remember it well? That showed the pillar with the big gap in it? The neighbors who live nearby said that that happened by, yes, there was something heavy and hanging out of the truck that came to do cleanup, and it was contracted by the city, I think it was an outsourced group, that hit that and broke that pillar. So I'm questioning whether they should be charged for somebody coming out from under the city's order and damaging it further. So maybe you could discount some of that money. I just, I hope that you see that when, this process is so long. I got involved with it back, I think, in 2022 and found that there was an error. I turned it over to a developer friend that lived in that Benton-St. John area where, where the neighbors seemed to have come from. I talked to the nursing home that put the $6,000 lien on. I said, "Can you come down on that any? If this gets demolished, you won't see any money anyway." They referred me to different people that, that were in charge, and ultimately, they just stopped taking my calls. They wouldn't respond to any emails. They were not willing to negotiate at that time. And about that time, it all got turned over to Michaela, and I haven't been involved very much. But I do live in Midtown. My brother and his wife live across the street, and it's about a $250,000 home, three-story Victorian, fully redone. Living and, and, living and maintaining historic property has served them very well. They are currently traveling the United States, and they've been traveling now for two years. And that was after a year of, of going on, on cruises and things. So I'm real proud of my brother and the, and the work that he did on, on the Skinnerly home. He was a restoration contractor. He, he has worked in that area a lot. He finished his career as a restoration contractor and, and carpenter in, in Vicarage. So I think that just because they're old and rundown doesn't mean that they're just suddenly a waste of everybody's time. And I think that being on the MAPC for 14 months, I can tell you that if that goes vacant and infill comes, one of those duplexes with the wide pressed siding, no front doors, no front windows, two double garages will be put there, and it will not go. And I don't care what builder brings a zoning change for that, they get it. They're putting those things everywhere. They say the market is, is valid for it, but the market, the people don't have a choice. The people really want to buy a home, but they're not being built. And there's not enough rentals, so they're having to live in these caves that don't foster community because you can't see out the front, garage is there, can't see on one side because that's where your neighbor is. Anyway, I just really think that if you care about history and you care about this, you need to improve the process and not let all the responsibility fall on the heirs. Because, you know, the land bank, they haven't been very successful in this either, and part of that is falls on the city.
Susie, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Susie. Appreciate it. We'll continue with public comment.
Good morning. My name is Claire Willenberg. I live at 1402 North Garland. We neighbor the Historic Midtown District. I have first a question. This is a two-part denial, as I understand it. Should these comments wait when we're talking about condition rather than the Historic Preservation Board's? Or, or is it okay to go ahead and talk about part two now? Okay.
You can talk about, as long as it's pertaining to 1416 and 1418 North Park Place.
Okay. We were getting confused. Thank you for the clarification. I also am a member of Historic Preservation Board, have been off and on for 25 years, I think. When term limits, I go to code standards or someplace else, and then I come back because I'm very interested in that. And what Scott gave you as information, Historic Preservation Board being limited to why we can say yea or nay is correct. But we did hear a lot from the neighbors and Historic Midtown Association Development Committee. So you'll be hearing more about that later. What I want to address is the condition of the structure. I'm going to read experts, excerpts, excuse me, from Jean Schulthe, who has been hired by the group. He is a very well-respected structural engineer. It says, "I have inspected the dwelling at the above-noted address to evaluate structural integrity, make recommendations," excuse me. I have a essential tremor, and it affects my voice also. Anyway, "to make recommendations for corrections as may be necessary. Early 1920s twin home, wood frame construction, full basement. The exterior appearance of the dwelling, especially the front, is poor. The front porch columns on each half need to be reconstructed. Additional work may be required with exposure of the porch framing. Foundations of both halves, very good to excellent condition. South wall of unit 416 has a slight inward slope, but the amount of movement is minimal, not sufficient to require mechanical stabilization. Floors are solid. The visible floor framing in the basement's very good condition. Minimal cracks in the plaster finish of the main and second levels on both halves. I could not find any indication of roof leaks on the ceiling or the roof. The chimneys require some masonry repair at the top." I'll skip through because it talks about which tuck pointing needs to be done on the chimneys. However, the chimneys are in satisfactory condition. Brick foundation of the porch for 416 will require some tuck pointing. Despite the rough appearance of the structure, the foundation and actual structure is very sound. Very little repairs are expected to be necessary outside of those noted herein. Roof structure repair is not expected to be necessary. The dwelling requires mostly cosmetic repair. The structure is in very good condition. I also have an email that was copied to me from the attorney that they have hired. He explains that he is out of town on a very time-consuming trial. He will be back next week. He expects to have the petition work done the week of 21st April. So that will be filed shortly. Any questions?
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
We'll continue with public comment.
Michaela Welch. I am at 1346 North Emporia, and I have the privilege of being the president of Historic Midtown Citizens Association. Councilwoman Ballard, Mayor Wu, counsel. It seems forever ago at this point, Mayor Wu, that you and I took a walk in my neighborhood. We took the opportunity to discuss the possibilities of what historic neighborhoods can do and also the challenges that do exist within the, the neighborhoods, i.e., let's talk about sidewalks. At that time, we discussed this duplex on Park Place. We discussed the fact that we could not take ownership of it yet as we were still searching for heirs. Unfortunately, we lost an heir during the search, and that further complicated the situation. We discussed how important it is that we continue taking care of our historic neighborhoods and that once the, we save our history by not building homes that don't belong in the area and that they do not contribute to the aesthetic of what the neighbors who work so diligently on their homes are trying. We discussed how we save our history of Wichita by maintaining these properties. This duplex is a contributing structure to the Fairview Park Place Historic Neighborhood. It is triple-listed. This is one of the projects that Mayor Wu and I discussed on our walk. It is now finally coming to fruition. This has not been easy. Randali Henman, who could not be here because she's on vacation, no, she wanted desperately to be here, but this was scheduled after she had already planned. She is the president of the Historic Midtown Citizens Development Fund. So we do have a separate organization that is to develop the Midtown area. They have been working diligently for well over a year to sort out the ownership of this property. We had to have tens of thousands of dollars of liens released against the property, which Ms. Henman was able to do. She's worked with the neighborhood police officer buyers to secure the building better so that we didn't have continual calls on the property. We have felt the responsibility to save this home for our historic district, but honestly, even more so for our neighbors. I would not want to live next to a house that looked like this, and I don't want to require my neighbors to longer. We have felt the weight of how difficult it is to live with a home that looks like this, especially when some of our neighbors have businesses that run out of their homes, and they see this as they drive up. While I wish I could have waved a magic wand and fixed this when it first became aware to me, I haven't been able to do that. We do, however, have that ability now. The structural engineer, as you recently heard, has indicated that this house is not a house for demo. The funds that are required for the exterior work, the, what the structural engineer has said needs to immediately been taken care of, those funds are available. We are also going to be working with the State of Kansas Historic Tax Credits to assist us in our progress. Most of those will be for the interior as we move forward. We have already begun cleanup of the exterior. We did that for our neighbors. We wanted to make sure that they would see that we're coming in with the hope that with your efforts to not demolish this home, we will work as a neighborhood again to save this house. There are many things that I'd love to share with you about the interior of this duplex that I was very shocked about, but we'll save that for when you come for a visit and take a look at what we're able to accomplish when we work together. So we ask that you deny the request for demolish in the spirit of preserving Wichita's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela, and I did enjoy that walk and appreciated that conversation. It is important to save Wichita's history, and it does take community to come together to try to solve issues, especially in neighborhoods. And so, again, this is a private property, and there's a legal process when it comes to property that does not belong to the city of Wichita. It is not a public property, and so I appreciate that community is coming together. And all of us received multiple emails throughout this last week, including one that was directly to me from Randali, who spoke about how this group has already secured some funds and will continue to do that, and I appreciate you bringing Randali up. Thank you.
Myron Ackerman, I'm in District One. I find it odd that a council would even have to think about denying this demolition permit. You just heard, you have a physically sound building that you're, someone wants to destroy. The exterior, it sound like, need very little work. Woodwork on pillars on a, on a porch is very simple and relatively inexpensive. The house, if it's in probate, I would take it as grossly incompetent if you were to take a house that was currently being probated. It may, sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak on this. It may turn out that there will be someone who will have ownership of this house once it's probated. You would be denying that person an asset. Also, you're denying, say, me as a businessman, to buy this home at tax audit, tax sale. I could buy it for the, for the residual taxes that are due. Then I would have the option, if it's a structurally sound house and it is historic with the neighborhood, destroying it would be inexcusable. The fact that it's structurally sound, it may be, well, I would say almost certainly, it will be. it will be bought at tax auction. To go ahead and destroy this building, I can't conceive of any of you being so blatantly insulting that you would destroy a structurally sound building with historic significance in a historic neighborhood. I would ask that you, I would ask that you find that you will not approve this. I find it, as I say, rather unbelievable that you would consider destroying a historic, structurally sound building. Also, I guess while I have an extra few minutes, I would seriously question the value of that house being at 20-some thousand. I would venture to say that lot is probably worth that much in that neighborhood. A house like that, if the exterior needs minimal work, what are, we aren't talking about the interior. If the house is kept, the interior completely can be completely gutted and redone as long as the exterior meets the historic requirements. So to me, this is, this is a no-brainer to say, no, we will not destroy this house.
Thank you, Myron. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Myron just contacted. Nobody on this council brought this forward. This goes through the process of historical preservation. And so no one from this council said, we want to demolish this building and brought this forward from the council.
Excuse me. I'm not saying that you are wanting to demolish this. Someone is wanting to demolish this, and I am asking you seriously to say, no. This is not, this should not be demolished. It's structurally sound. It's valued in the community. And there are at least two more options for ownership of this home. And to allow demolition of a house that can be rehabilitated, can be picked up inexpensively relatively at tax auction, why would you destroy it? Why would you approve demolition?
Thank you, Myron.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. Thank you to the seventh, we have staff.
Scott Wadel again from Planning. There have been some questions about the taxes and assessments placed on the property. We have copies of the property report from the appraiser's office, and so I just wanted to distribute those, if that's okay.
Thank you, Scott. I see the number now matches what I mentioned, which was $9,762.96 from our green packet. So thank you very much for the clarification.
We will close public comment now and bring it back to the bench, to the council members. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a question for staff. So if it's on the verge of going into being seized by the county in tax auction, is there a way to, like, when would that process start since they're four years behind? Or five years now, I guess.
Mayor and Council, Chris Labor again. The, so the property is currently listed for the tax sale with Sedgwick County. That will be administered by the Sedgwick County Treasurer and the Sheriff's Office, and that is forecast to take place the third week of October of this year. They will not have a date certain until 30 days in advance of the sale, and that's when that will be published. But they have confirmed to us that it is on those rolls.
Okay, and then, so there's still time for it to go through the probate process?
Correct. And generally speaking, if taxes are paid even up until the day before that sale, they will remove it from the list.
Okay, and that, and whatever sale would happen, $9,000, almost $10,000 would automatically go to pay off the taxes?
Correct. Assuming it was sold for that amount, it would come back to pay property and assessment taxes in that order.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with council member comments. I see none. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott and Chris and everybody else that has been working hard on this. Thank you, Michaela, and all of the residents from Midtown and District Six, actually, that have come to speak about this. This has been really interesting. This has been a property that has been on the radar since I got on council. It went through the process first, and I believe Claire was my appointment on the Historic Preservation Board then. And it was interesting, we learned that if the Historic Preservation Board denies the demo, it just kind of dies and like nothing, nothing happens. So we've talked to, you know, Scott, about what does that process look like? They can't just be kind of stagnant and like hanging out there. There needs to be a plan. If we're going to pull it off and not demo it, there needs to be a plan. So that's why this has gone through the whole second time to go through the process again. And I have been in very close communication with the Midtown Board. They do have a general contractor estimate. They have done a structural engineer report that shows that the bones of it are good. It just needs a little bit of TLC on the outside. And they have spoken to the bank and have a letter to secure financing. So with that, I move to defer this item to October 7th, 2025 City Council meeting, which is the first regular meeting following 180 days from this present meeting. In support of this motion, I would like to offer the following. This would provide approximately six months for stakeholders to improve the property. In addition, it would provide some time for stakeholders to work on resolving the property ownership issue. And my expectations are that during the deferral, I would receive regular updates about the progress made in improving the property, and the building permits will be pulled during the deferral period.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak briefly to this. I'll be supportive of the motion. I think this is a win for the community. If we can work like this on future properties to save historical properties, I think that's a plus. Hopefully, we can look at this because this also involves the property owner. That's why I'm supportive of this as well. Hopefully, we can replicate this if it is successful in the next 180 days to save historic properties and make sure we put these property, restore these properties and then put them back on the tax rules as well. Thank you for the work on this, and I look forward to seeing what happens in 180 days.
Motion and a second. I see no further discussion. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structures.
Mayor, councilmembers, good morning again. Chris Labor, MABCD. So given the discussion today and as the applicant, obviously as Scott described, we are here today because of the amount of time involved in this, the amount of time that the property had been in this condition. However, we obviously are happy to save housing stock as well as a historical resource and certainly support the council's decision. With that, there's no action that we can take today on this hearing since the appeal of the Historical Preservation Board has been deferred. I will change staff's recommendation at this point and recommend that the city council open the hearing, but defer a comment and action to the same date as the HPB appeal will be considered, which is specifically October 7th. With that, I will remind you all, the interested parties and the community in general, that City Council Policy 33 addresses deferrals of properties under a condemnation consideration. So there are some guidelines in there. Those include many of the things that have been discussed today, such as bringing the taxes current, ensuring that the premise conditions remain clean, and ensuring that the property remains secure. Those are included in the agenda. As Councilmember Ballard has added, we would also request that the ownership be pursued and be brought to a legal status in which they can pull a building permit and that that take place in this amount of time. With that, I'm happy to stand for any other questions that council may have.
Thank you, Chris. I do have one question, and I think it has to do not with this property, but the process itself. I've had some neighbors from specifically South Broadway ask questions regarding illegal encampments on private property where the property owner is not found. That there's also kind of like this situation where it took years to truly find the property owner. What is the process for these individuals, especially as they see encampments on private property, but there's no property owner that can be immediately found?
So, and in basic terms, Mayor, since we deal with the property, once the homeless outreach team, police department, or whoever would be involved in that has taken care of the people aspect of that, the process is very similar for us through abatement. Now with our new ordinance, and we can get Kaylin up here to talk more specifics, but with the cleanup ordinance, this allows us to initiate that process much more quickly, especially if we have not been able to reach property owners and verify those notifications. We're able to go ahead and energize that process and get the property.
Kaylin Nethercott, Neighborhood Inspection Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, for the record. To echo what Chris said, we are able to expedite those cleanups. The notification process is different. It's a slightly expedited process when there's not an active property owner involved. We do all that research on the front end. And then it can move, it can also be expedited when there's second and subsequent complaints for the same type of issue on the same lot. But once again, we're going to rely on the hot team and WPD to take care of the people issue, and then we're going to move as quickly as we possibly can to take care of the property issue that's created by that homeless encampment. The one thing I would remind and reiterate, I think I said this in the last workshop, is to please tell people to continue to report to us because we're not going back to double-check something that we've already cleaned up. We're relying on those reported complaints to let us know if the problems recur. So.
Thank you, Kaylin. I appreciate that. I know that that was a specific question that I had had from a community member in District Number Three, Councilmember Hoheisel's district, about how the revised encampment ordinance would allow for a quicker response as neighbors want to have a safe neighborhood and a clean neighborhood, what they would have to do in order to have some encampments in their areas cleaned up quicker.
Yes, and I would, one caveat to that is that obviously size of that is also going to dictate how quickly we can move on the cleanup. The size of the encampments will also be a little bit of a determining factor, a little planning and organizing on our part on how we address those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kaylin. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment.
Still Michaela Welch on North Emporia, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of items that I may not have spent time on. We, as Historic Midtown Citizens Development, goodness, the acronyms, Association, we have plans to pay the back taxes and any additional as soon as we receive the vote that we are not going to be demolishing today. So we needed to wait for that, per our attorney. Claire was able to read for you the message from the attorney that has also been shared with all of you, that they will begin process as soon as he comes back into town so that we can take rightful ownership. We brought you today the heirs for the property to be able to say that they want us to be there and to save the property. So I just wanted to link all of that up for all of you. So if you have any questions, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Good morning, mayors and members of the Wichita City Council. John Todd, 1559 North Payne, District Six. I really support your efforts to repair the building. And I would say that the total fees on this, you should not require that to happen until the owner actually has the good title. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you, John. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This again resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the information provided by MABCD and the information provided during the previous agenda item, HPB 2024-00008, I move the city council to open the condemnation hearing, but defer comments and action until October the 7th Wichita City Council meeting. During the deferral period, the following conditions will apply. The interested parties will pursue obtaining legal ownership. In relation to obtaining legal ownership, the interested parties will provide any filing information, complete with a case number to MABCD. The interested parties will obtain a building permit for the needed structural repairs once they have legal right to make such repairs. The structure is to remain secure. The property's premise will remain clean of debris and be maintained in accordance with municipal code, and all property taxes will be paid and kept current.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Police Department, property acquisition.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Captain Aaron Moses, executive officer of the Wichita Police Department, here to discuss the Wichita Police Department Central Bureau and property related to the building. A little background of what we're discussing. We've been operating out of this building at 332 North River Boulevard since 2018. It has housed our central bureau, which at the time housed the Night Violent Crimes Response Team and currently houses our traffic section, our motorcycles, our accident follow-up detectives, and our accident processing staff. It also houses our community support specialists. There's two of those. And we have plans to potentially have this building house additional staff moving forward. It is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development location, which is what sort of brings us here today. The building is set to be sold, and the WPD would like to maintain operations in that location by purchasing ownership of the building. As part of the HUD disposition application, the building was recently appraised for $670,000. The city council acquisition request for the building will be brought later for consideration. As we looked through this and had discussions about this building, one of the things that came up was parking for the building. And we learned that the south parking lot attached or next to this building, adjacent to the building, actually, those lots will be used for the apartment, which is across River Boulevard from the parking lot. And there was no dedicated parking space for this building. So we began looking at options for parking if we decided to stay in the building permanently. And that led us to what I'm presenting today, which is an agreement to buy a portion of the parking lot to the north for $175,000. Here's an overview of what we're talking about. So the central bureau building is right under the words Wichita Police. And then the area of the parking lot that we're talking about purchasing is the yellow square there. The area we currently use to park in are the parking spots down on the south side with the red arrow, but those parking lots do belong to the apartment building, which is just barely in the frame on the left-hand side there. We began having discussions or looking at multiple options in the area as far as leasing parking spaces for this building and found that, number one, it was expensive, and number two, nobody would actually give us the rights to those spaces if they had a tenant come into their buildings and then would use those spaces. So that's when we began looking at purchasing parking space. So that's when we began looking at purchasing parking space. Currently, the parking lot is not secured and does not have access from Riverview Street, which, if the purchase goes through, that is something we would like to do, is secure those parking spaces and provide access to the parking lot off of Riverview Street. I'll go back one slide. Essentially, where the arrow is, is where we're looking at providing access into the parking lot for our staff. Finance staff has identified available funding of $1 million and $40,000 from a closed project, $670,000 for the purchase of the building, $175,000 for the purchase of the parking lot, $155,000 for closing costs, survey, title insurance, security upgrades, and access upgrades. The recommended action is, we recommend the City Council approve the project and the necessary budget adjustments, the bonding resolution, and authorize all necessary signatures. I am here and happy to stand for questions. Also here is Jerry, who can help if we have any questions, and Director Stang can probably help too if we have any questions about the HUD status of the building.
Thank you, Aaron, for the presentation. Questions for staff? I have several. Can we, I think this might not be a PD question, it's more of a either Jerry question or Sally question. It's about the building itself. How big is this building? Is this fair market value? I looked back at the agreement from April of 2024, when the city sold the Habitat for Humanity building for $682,500. That building was 19,798 square feet, but the total property, I believe, is 115,852 square feet. Can we, I'd like a comparison.
Sure.
Is this fair market value?
This is considered fair market value. The City of Wichita procured an appraisal on behalf of housing as part of the disposition process application needed for HUD. So this property was appraised by an independent third-party appraiser at a value of $670,000, which is approximately $50 a square foot for the property. The property is 13,430 square feet, according to my notes.
Just the building itself?
That's just the building itself. When it's an improved property, generally, it's, the value is as it is improved, so the land is not separate.
I have questions about that appraisal. I want to make sure that, since this building is really a transfer from a city department to a city department, I know it's a HUD property, that taxpayers don't have to pay extra for this building, so that it truly is fair. So that's question, so it's more of a comment. I want to make sure that that is truly $670,000 instead of a lowered price. The second question I have regarding that building is, does PD currently pay rent for that space?
Not to my knowledge, PD does not pay rent. When PD moved into the property in 2018, they made some significant capital improvements to the property, which in theory then contribute to the value that was presented today.
Thank you. And this is now a question, I think, for the City Manager. What other properties does PD pay rent for?
Manager, if it's okay, I'll take care of that. I looked into that, Mayor, and we currently have two locations that we pay rent for. One is our Patrol South Community Policing Office in the Old Town area, and the other is a facility that I'm not going to disclose the location of due to the sensitive activity that occurs there, that's on the west side of town.
I'm going to ask questions regarding the Patrol South Community Policing Old Town specific building. How long have we been paying rent at that location, and what is the rent?
So the earliest record I could find was 2008, so we've been there at least since 2008. The current agreement was, the most recent agreement was signed in 2021 through 2024, and it offered one two-year extension. The lease rate was $2,000 a month. For the two-year extension, that increased to $2,300 a month, and that extension goes through July of 2026.
This is more of a question, again, back to, I think, City Manager. What prompted this, paying Old Town for a building, knowing, I know for a fact that there are a lot of officers in that area to try to keep folks safe? Why was there rent that PD has to pay for?
Mayor, thank you for the question. You and I have discussed some of this in the past. My recollection of the history is that the police wanted a presence in Old Town due to public concerns about safety in Old Town, especially over the weekends, but the feeling that a police presence would improve the perception of safety for those that were using the hotel and retail spaces in that area. When I, I could be wrong about this, but my recollection is when I arrived here, we were moving out of space we owned in the parking garage area, in Old Town Square. We had to vacate that space for a tenant who wanted to expand their retail use, and that's when the Police Department looked for an alternative site. Since you've raised those questions, I've had conversations with the chief, and at the end of our time in this current space, he believes that we can reconfigure some of the space at the building that will be purchased from the Housing Department. He thinks we can move them over there, because the presence in Old Town is probably not as important to us. It's just a matter of having a presence downtown that is important for this unit. And Aaron can talk more about that from a program standpoint.
City Manager, I have multiple more questions regarding that. So, the City of Wichita, public property that is owned would be what we discussed a few, now probably an hour ago, regarding the garage area and those tenants. That is owned by the City of Wichita.
Right.
The City of Wichita also owns City Arts, the building, correct?
Yes.
And obviously, in total, the two garages in Old Town. My question then is, why has that never been thought of? Why didn't we just have PD have some space in either of those two city-owned properties so you don't have to pay rent?
For most of the last five to 10 years, we've not had vacant space in the garage area. We just had a space vacate that Council just approved a lease for recently, but we've not had much turnover in those spaces. And in terms of City Arts, it's just a matter of, I don't know that there was available space. We would have had to cut back on programming in order to put the police in that space.
I can't change what has happened in the past, but this does not seem financially or fiscally prudent to have to pay for rent, especially when the city already owns property downtown, where you could maybe carve out space and actually make it dedicated. I know that it is convenient for police to have a space in Old Town, given that they have a presence to make sure that people are safe, and so I really appreciate that. However, I don't believe that it is prudent that the city should be paying rent for property when the city actually owns property in that vicinity. So that's just for the record. And then now, knowing that you've had the conversation with Chief about possibly moving some of that over to the building that we're discussing right now, I still don't know if that is the solution, given that there's still a presence in Old Town and people want the officers in that area and the convenience of the officers having that space. So I don't want to inconvenience our officers who are literally providing safety in that area, but I don't like the fact that we've been paying rent at that location when, again, we have property that the city owns. So I just, again, it's more of a comment, and I know that we're now going to rectify this moving forward, but again, when I was, when this was brought to my attention, that the City of Wichita has been paying rent in Old Town, given all the conversations we've had about deferred maintenance at parking lots in Old Town, it really bothered me, and I think that that is part of the conversation that we need to have about, well, we have city property, why not use city property to the best usage rather than having to pay private developers' rent? It really doesn't make sense. So, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, I guess, for Sally. Are we under the gun? No pun intended for that one, to get this deal through with regards to some of the changes that HUD has coming down the pipeline?
I don't know that I'd say under the gun. Once we do receive the approval of the disposition, which is still in HUD's hands at that point, we would need to be making progress towards disposition of that property. The approval of that application could be another 30 to 120 days, by my estimate.
Okay, so, and we don't expect that to either be expedited or to disappear altogether with?
We hope not. We hope not. We've had no additional follow-up from HUD on the application since it was assigned to the HUD staffer who's reviewing it.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Captain Moses, what's the square footage of that rented space in Old Town? Do you know?
Oh, I have, I don't have it in front of me.
2,000 square feet.
Thank you.
2,000 square feet. So, $2,300 a month, pretty cheap. Very, very cheap. Just doing numbers in my head. I think, Mayor, what we need to think about too is, we have the triple net in Old Town that we own in the parking garage space. It's about $9 a square foot, so if we do, are in that space, it is going to cost us $9 a square foot. The other question you have to ask is, what is the best uses of that space? Since that's an entertainment district, it's better to have a police station there or to have a tenant in there that draws people down to that area. So, I would say it's the latter. It's better to have a tenant in that space. So, I don't see a problem with this police renting a space in Old Town for $2,300 a month. Very, very inexpensive rent for that space, and it gives them a presence in Old Town. So, I think we have to weigh all options and all the benefits and cost to it, so not just look at, we have to be in all city space. That's my comment.
Has, a follow-up to that question, has City Arts building ever been considered, since that is not a tenant-based location? Has City Arts, maybe a portion of City Arts, provide some space for PD, maybe in the back, to store some of their items? I guess, has that ever been explored?
Not that I'm aware of.
And does PD believe the convenience of that location, would that serve the purpose better than being a central building, the one that we're discussing?
We've modified our deployment approach to Old Town as far as closing and in the evening hours. Certainly, it's beneficial to have, we believe it's beneficial to have a presence in the area during the day, but we will certainly look to Council direction on the desire of Council and their wishes and execute that appropriately. Either building would suit our needs. I think there is a benefit to having police presence in the Old Town area during the day. Like I said, at night, bar closing time, we have that covered through an alternative deployment plan that we use in the weekends. It's during the day and during the week that we, we don't necessarily have dedicated, we have dedicated staff to that area, but they're responding to calls all over the Patrol South Bureau, if that makes sense.
I know that a lot of people were walking around during the NCAA games, and they appreciated seeing a presence of our Police Department, but again, I would say that you're providing this safety service every single weekend, especially in the Old Town area, so I don't believe that it was prudent, not the PD's, it was not up to PD, but they should not have been, you guys should not have been having to pay for that space, given that there's a lot of resources, including PD's time and personnel that goes out to Old Town every single weekend to keep folks safe in that area. So, I'm more upset that we've been paying since 2008 this rent, when really, the services that are provided by the Police Department, I'm sure outweigh a lot of that $2,000 per month, and it provides extra safety for people in Old Town. And so, again, I am still not believing that we should have to pay $2,000 per month. It should be that added service that already is being provided, and so, I'm just going to, again, be on the record that that is not prudent, that the City of Wichita should have to pay rent, again, for an area that you do provide extra safety. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And I see Lindsey is here way in the back, but regarding City Arts, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I am on the City Arts Advisory Board, so I'm in that building quite often, and there would not be room, I would not estimate, for additional occupants. One of the things that they've done, in addition to not only having the wonderful exhibits, but they also now are a licensed childcare provider, and so they have camps, and they have classes, and things that serve young and old almost every day. So, Lindsey, if I've said anything wrong, please let me know, but as I mentioned, I'm in that space quite frequently, and I don't see a spare inch, so just a comment. Thank you.
Captain Moses, the 2,000 square feet in the Old Town building, what is it utilized for? And then can you explain the 19,000, or sorry, 13,400 square feet at the Central Bureau currently? What does that get used for?
So the space in Old Town is dedicated to our Patrol South Community Policing Office. It is a structure that we're looking at changing as we move into the future, so we have had dedicated, separate space for our community policing officers in the past. Recently, Patrol East, with the construction of a new station, they moved into the new station. We stopped leasing space at the Old Wichita Mall. Patrol West, our plan is to do the same thing. They have a dedicated community policing office now, but as, we should be breaking ground on the new station in the spring, this spring, and then at the completion of that project, Patrol West Community Policing will move into the station. We don't currently have plans to build a new Patrol South in the near future, but certainly, if that were to happen, I could see the same thing, that the Patrol South Community Policing Officers would move into the station. That's our ideal scenario, is to have them in the station with other officers. But that office space in the Old Town area specifically is used by our community policing officers to do some of their administrative work and have an additional presence in the area during the day. Additionally, providing officers who work in that area a space to go if they need some workspace as well. The Central Bureau is, houses, like I said, our Accident Follow-Up Investigators. It houses professional staff that process all of our accident reports, process some of our out-of-custody DUI investigations. It also has a dedicated garage space, which is very important to us for our motorcycles, so we're able to park our police motorcycles inside. They're also able to do work on those motorcycles inside, so that's a very important part of this space for us. And it has workspace for our Community Support Specialists, which are two DCF partnership positions. It's the best way I can describe them. Councilmember Hoheisel is well aware of what they do. He helped us with some work at the state level with their positions. And it also houses our Homeless Outreach Team now. They moved from Patrol South into the Central Bureau. So that's what currently is housed within the Riverview Building. Again, we've had discussions about potentially moving the Patrol South Community Policing Office into that building. We don't think there's enough space currently to move the Patrol South Community Policing Officers into Patrol South. It's a relatively small substation, but we do believe we can find space in the central building if we need to.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up, Jerry?
No, I'm just grabbing my things.
We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. We'll begin with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. Everything I just heard makes a lot of sense to me to support this, so I'll be supportive of this. Hopefully, we can see some more officers getting into that space. It sounds like a great location. And also, for the record, I definitely support City Arts and would love to see both of these items stay separate, and by approving this, I think we can do that, and City Arts can keep its space active as it has been.
This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the project and the necessary budget adjustments, the bonding resolution, and authorize all necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Initiation of the process to nominate the Crown Uptown Theater to the Wichita Register of Historic Places.
Hello, Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. So this is an item on whether to consider, to consider whether or not to initiate the nomination process. And that is to consider adding the Crown Uptown Theater at thirty-two oh seven East Douglas onto the Wichita Register of Historic Places. So the recommended action is to take action as determined necessary by the City Council. This item is being presented today because a City Council member requested consideration of initiating this process. In terms of the process, the process for initiating the nomination process is established in the municipal code, and is described in the staff report. Here's a brief overview. So there is the initiation, there's public notice that's provided, and then there is a public hearing at the Wichita Historic Preservation Board. Then a more complete or fuller application of designation is submitted to the Planning Department. The Planning Department then processes the applicant, that form to put it on the next Planning Commission meeting. And then the Planning Commission weighs in, and then the City Council considers it. So, one thing that I would highlight, that if today, if the action is to initiate the nomination process, then it, please note that it does not list it, it starts the process for consideration. The municipal code requires that the nomination process can only be initiated by the property owner, the Wichita Historic Preservation Board, the City Council, or it does allow for another party to initiate the process, but that has to be with the consent of the property owner in that instance. In terms of the property background, the theater, as you know, was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight. It is not listed on either the National State or Wichita Registers of Historic Places. It is identified as an undesignated historic resource by the city of Wichita. Here's some photos, so this is the aerial. In terms of the process, nineteen ninety-eight, that's when the City Council approved the Undesignated Historic Resources List with the theater on it. On February fifth, the applicant submitted a demolition permit application. That same day, the preservation planner placed interim controls on the property. On February thirteenth, the preservation planner sent an email and certified letter to the property owner, notifying them of the interim control period. And per the municipal code, during the interim control period, the preservation planner worked with the owner of the property to provide alternatives to demolition. On February twentieth, the preservation planner sent a letter to the applicant requesting thoughts and feedback on alternatives to demolition. The applicant submitted a written letter to the City Council. It reiterated the applicant's desire for the occupancy increase and provided some of the reasoning. It did not review many of the alternatives identified by the preservation planner in that letter. On March fourth, the City Council extended the interim controls, and those are set to expire on August fourth. So the recommended action, again, for this item is to take action as determined necessary by the City Council. Staff would recommend that you accept public comments on this item. And here are some additional photos, if needed, if there's any questions. We have photos of the property and surrounding areas. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, so this has to go to Historic Preservation Board and then MAPC?
Yes, sir.
What happens if either of those vote to deny it? Does that throw a kink in it, or is that just for our information to consider at the end?
I'm going to grab some resources, so I can answer that question.
Appreciate that.
So in the municipal code, so what is required at the Historic Preservation Board level is an affirmative vote of the majority of the members to constitute approval of the application. Likewise, at the Planning Commission, it lists what the materials are. Okay, and the Planning Commission, so set forth its finding as to whether the listing is consistent with adopted plans and shall transmit such findings to the City Council. It does not immediately, a quick review, it does not immediately indicate what should happen if that, you do not receive that, but I think it is implied that the, at the Historic Preservation Board, if they do not approve it, it does not move forward. But again, that's a quick read, and that's what I believe is implied. It's not explicit.
So MAPC does not follow the same?
No, I believe they're providing you with a finding as to whether or not it's consistent with adopted plans. So they could find that it's not, and yet it would still be, go forward, because it indicates that they shall transmit such findings to the City Council. So with that language, to me, it does not mean that the application would fail if they found that it did not. They would still transmit that to you.
Last question. And you touched on it briefly, what considerations does the Historic Preservation Board need to look at with it? Is it more, is this appropriate to be designated, or do they take it like, it's appropriate in this particular case?
No, they will be reviewing that in, whether or not it meets, whether or not it meets guidelines, and just one moment, I, yes, okay, so materials, character. Also, they would be looking at historic events that took place there. So there are a number of different qualifying features that could, could be with, associated with a property.
Okay, so it's similar to the other ones, it's more a question of if it's appropriate for this particular location to be designated as historical?
That is correct, and that would be, again, you could base it on architecture, you could take, base it on historic events that have taken place there. Or there could be someone famous that's associated with a property, maybe a given architect, or someone who maybe owned it and operated it at one time. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the, does the owner of the property consent to this process being initiated?
We have not heard directly on this, so I will not speak for them.
Okay, have a minimum of fifty percent of property owners within the record of the applicant, so the historic district begun this process?
I would say the property owner is not initiating, has, is not requested for this process to be initiated.
So I'll have the follow-up question. Can you go back to the slide regarding the process? Can you explain how you can initiate the process one more time? There are specifically four ways to initiate this process. Can you explain those four processes?
Yes, there are four, there are four individuals or organizations that can initiate this process. And that is the property owner, or i- in the case of a district, a minimum of fifty percent of the property owners. A, so that's the first one. Second one is a majority of the Historic Preservation Board, so the Wichita Historic Preservation Board. A third one is a majority of the City Council, so four out of seven. And the last option is other, if accompanied by written consent of the owner.
And if I look at the process right now, remind us, who initiated this conversation?
So this item is being presented at the request of a council member.
So I see that the initiation right now is being considered by the council, and the last step, last step in this process is back to the council. So the same organization that would initiate would then also have the final determining decision, especially when this is not a public property. The city of Wichita does not own this, correct?
That is correct.
I have grave concern in trying to take away property rights from property owners. This, again, since there are four ways to initiate this process, and the council has final say at the very end, I don't believe this is prudent to try to take away property owners' rights. And so, I would like to know if the council is not one of the entities that initiates, and you just said that the property owner has not initiated this, what has the Historic Preservation Board done?
And so, I'm going to reflect the question back to make sure I understand it correctly. So the question is, in similar circumstances, where the property owner has initiated the listing process, what has the City Council traditionally done?
No, so right now, the four ways that you can initiate is, one, by the property owner, two, by a majority of the individuals in that community, if the property owner says yes. Three would be the Historic Preservation Board, or four, the council. So in this situation, the property owner has not said yes, or a majority of the individuals in the area with the consent of the property owner have not said yes. Right now, we're discussing the council, but I've just mentioned that this is the council initiating, and then the council making final decision at the very end, which seems to conflict with property of rights. And the, the final one is the Historic Preservation Board. What has the Historic Preservation Board done since?
There have not been properties added to the Wichita Historic Registry in many, many years. So we do not have kind of precedent in this instance.
This would be the very first time, if approved, it would set the precedent that the council can initiate a process without the consent of a property owner. Is that correct?
I just want to clarify that, that, obviously, this process has been used in the past at some point, because there are properties that are listed on the Wichita Register of Historic Places. It's just not in recent history that we've seen that a property get listed on there. In terms of whether or not it established precedence, it's in the municipal code as an option. So that, that is how it's provided. In terms of the details about how other properties have been listed, I, I do not have that readily available.
Can you also explain why, in the past, it has not been initiated by previous property owners, or why that process has not begun? As, as I understand it, this specific building is not on the Wichita Registry, it's not on the state one, and it's not on the national one, but it's been around for decades. So my question is, why, do you know why it was never put on the registry prior to this specific property owner?
I do, I do not know, and, and I don't know that I would want to speculate at this time.
Thank you, Scott. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for transparency, I am that council member that asked for this.
Thank you. Any further questions? Have we received any response from the property owner since the March fourth council meeting?
There was the letter leading up to that one, there were the comments that were provided at that meeting. I do not believe that we've received any other communications from the owner.
Thank you, Scott. I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment.
Arthur Allen, District One. Just a point of order, or case of information, that the owner has had offers, but he is not willing to discuss a purchase price. So there are people, obviously, that are interested in purchasing the building and saving the building. And he had given his word when he bought it from Mr. Basham, that he would not destroy it. And we all know that he has not kept his word to you all in the past, but that's the truth. It is that there are offers, but he will not negotiate. Thank you.
Any further comments or public wanting to speak to the council on this matter? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supportive of this today. I believe that property rights are one of the most fundamental rights, and I believe that our job from this bench is to protect it. I would hope that if someone was trying to seize my property or do something with it against my wishes, there'd be somebody from this bench to defend me and my property rights as well. I will say I love this building. I urged from this bench for the developer, the owner, not to tear it down. I often go to this building. I believe it's valuable to the history of Wichita. But I don't take my value of it higher than his property rights. I appreciate that there have been offers, but just because there's offers on a property does not mean an owner has to accept those offers. And so, because of my desire to make sure that we have properties that are maintained in the future, I've, working with Scott actively to work on a preservation plan with my appointee to the historic board, that we can proactively add properties to the registry with the consent of the owner. And so her and I will be meeting in the coming weeks regarding this as well, so we can make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success. I think what happened with Midtown earlier today is a good example of how we can make sure that we're saving these properties with the consent of the owner, with neighborhoods working together, and everybody pushing in the same direction. And so I will not be supportive of this today, though, again, I love this property, and I urge that we maintain it as part of integral to Wichita's history.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that the Wichita City Council initiate the process to nominate the Crown Uptown Theater for placement on the Wichita Register of Historic Places.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will just add my two cents before adding my vote to refuse this. It is not because I don't believe in the value of the Crown Uptown. I believe in the value of the Crown Uptown and its historic presence and part of our Wichita history. However, I'm very concerned when we are taking away a property owner's right to say whether they do or do not consent to have something done to their property. This should have been initiated years ago. And why it was not, we still don't know. But we are at this juncture where this property is not owned by the city. It's not owned by private cities, by the taxpayers of this community. Rather, it is owned by one property owner. And knowing that, at the end of the process, we, as a council, will be able to vote on this designation, again, does not seem to be right. And because of that, and the opportunity for the property owner to say, in conjunction with the community, whether he wants to sell it or not, I think having the conversation is important, and we should have those conversations. But in this situation, I believe in property rights. And so I will not be voting in favor of this. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes four to three. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Twenty twenty-five state and local cybersecurity grant program submission.
Morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mike Mator for the IG Department. Hopefully, I bring you something that's fairly simple. The grant program, we, we applied last year. Luckily, we were able to get some funding. This just supplements some of our replacement funds. So, the state and local cybersecurity grant program through the state of Kansas helps us address cybersecurity risks. Mostly in this scenario, it helps us replace equipment. Again, it, it helps from a funding perspective. Kansas was awarded two point eight million dollars in funding. February twenty-eighth, twenty-five, we submitted three grant applications. The reason we supplied three is because we have found that those applications, if they're in a certain range in terms of cost, because this is throughout the whole state, two point eight million has to go across all the state. So it gives us a better opportunity for funding. Again, equipment, replacement is why we do this. Better for overall security in terms of our network. We have some older equipment that we replace on a regular basis. We do have funding for that, but this just supplements that. Again, three grant submissions, one fire and police for four hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and eighteen, public services for three hundred and twenty-five, eight hundred and twenty. Public services for $325,820. And city hall replacements for $286,322. As last year, there are no requirements for matching funds. So this is completely paid for through the state of Kansas, actually through the federal government, but state of Kansas has the funds. So recommended that city council approve the grant agreements and authorize the necessary signatures. I will happily stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No questions, thank you. Any comment from the audience? Anybody like comment on this issue? See none? Try to delay it just a little bit longer. Back to the council, any other comments from the council? Regarding this issue? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to approve it and let's get the necessary signatures.
Second.
You can talk about how your bracket's doing real quick, JV.
I'm at 99.7% ESPN.
Sorry, can I put my vote in?
We have voted in. We're right there now.
Has anyone put a?
I already made the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clark, please open the roll.
Motion passes seven zero. We can do a break if you guys would like. We can take a 15-minute break. It is 11:52. How about we return at 12:15 and allow for some opportunities for individuals to use other facilities? Okay, we will return at 12:15.
12:15, we will return to the City Council meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Purchase of 12 public housing authority properties from the Wichita Housing Authority and allocation of CDBG funds.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record.
We have no PowerPoint.
There we go, thank you. The item I have for you today is the allocation of CDBG funds for the purpose of purchasing 12 former public housing properties. So going back in 2017, the Housing Authority Board approved application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development to reposition its entire portfolio under the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. The advantage of that was to allow housing authorities to convert from the public housing platform to a Section 8 platform, to allow it to incur debt, to raise funding necessary to complete the rehab of the properties that had been underfunded for decades. The portfolio was divided into two projects, one which was four multifamily senior buildings and the remaining 352 single-family homes. The RAD conversion was successful on the multifamily buildings and actually to date, construction is complete on three of the four and we expect construction to be complete on Greenway Manor in August or September of this year. But we were not successful in securing the financing necessary to continue under the RAD project for the 352 single-family homes. Since then, the properties have been broken out into six different Section 18 disposition applications since December 6, 2022. Those six applications cover all 352 of the properties and five of them have been approved to date, covering 215 of the properties. The most recent application, the remaining of the housing units and the non-housing properties, which include that former housing-owned office building that was an item earlier, are still awaiting HUD approval. And as of today, 134 properties have sold and 26 are under contract. The reason we're moving this project forward is we have multiple projects funded under the Community Development Block Grant Funds that have been underspent or slow in spending, including MABCD demolitions, the Propel Small Business Assistance CDBG, Land Bank Acquisition and Rehab's, the Midtown Lighting Project, and the Home Repair Program. The Home Repair Program was revamped last year to allow homeowners to request up to $25,000 in funding for requisite home repairs. We expected to see more bigger projects come forward and we're really not seeing that. The average project is still around $8,000. So 60 days prior to the end of the program year, which happens to fall on May 2, HUD completes an expenditure timeliness review. And in order to meet that timeliness requirements, we would need to spend about more than half a million dollars in CDBG funds. And so we're recommending spending $575,000 in CDBG funds to purchase 12 public housing units that HUD has already approved for sale and have already requested the Declaration of Trust releases, as well as the allocation of additional $900,000 in CDBG to complete rehabilitation of all 12 units. The 12 units are listed on this slide with their appraised value, as well as indicated on the map as a turquoise little dot. Also on the map highlighted yellow, you will see what we have designated as Pilot Area 1, which was the investment of the Affordable Housing Funds and our partnerships with multiple developers to make improvements to those properties. So every one of the properties we're proposing falls within a half a mile, most of them are much closer than that, to Pilot Area 1 with that Affordable Housing Fund investment area. And we believe the synergy around the neighborhood investment will spur demand for the units and increased appraisals that will return that CDBG investment back to us as program income. Habitat for Humanity, who has 16 properties in what they're calling the Rock the Lot Pilot Area, is estimating that post-renovation, the properties will be worth between $122,000 and $189,000, depending on the size of the lot and the size of the house. The end goal of the project is to renovate the properties for low-income homebuyers as the first priority, or could be affordable rentals if we cannot secure enough qualified homebuyers with recorded affordability restrictions. Housing staff will procure contractors and oversee the renovations and all renovations contracts would be brought back to the City Council through the Board of Bids for approval. My concern with the climate in Washington, D.C., it is possible that missing that timeliness requirement would result in the funds being recaptured. In previous years, haven't seen that happen to many or any entitlement cities, but this year, I'm very fearful that if we don't meet that, because it is in the regulations, that it could be recaptured. There is no impact to the general fund. The expenditure of the $575,000 prior to the May 2 expenditure evaluation will protect the funding from being recaptured. And once those units are sold to a low-income homebuyer or to an investor with the affordability restrictions, the proceeds from that sale will return to the CDBG program as program income and be able to be reinvested back out into the community. The real estate contract has been reviewed and approved by the Law Department. The project is consistent with the consolidated plan and the PHA plan goals to renovate the properties for low-income residents and it is recommended that the City Council approve the real estate contract and allocation of $575,000 in CDBG funds for acquisition and $900,000 for renovation of 12 public housing properties and authorize the necessary signatures, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sally. I think we've seen the beginning of this presentation like
I know.
two dozen times since I've been
I'm sorry, I do that for the public.
Just a couple of quick questions. The affordable housing restrictions, those are the same that we have with Lytech credits and whatnot.
If we were to do rentals, it would be a 15-year restriction. On affordable homebuyers, it's a 10-year period in which any down payment assistance, half would be forgiven if they stay 10 years. If they don't stay 10 years, then that actually comes back to the CDBG fund, so it would be recaptured upon sale.
Okay, what's the plan if we do this and we come up, you know, we have an extra $100,000 that wasn't spent on restoration or we're butting up against a timeline? Do we have any contingency plans for any of that funding?
So absolutely, we could come back and ask to reallocate the funds to a different project, so long as it's already in the annual action plan. If we were to want to allocate that to a project that's not in the plan, that will be brought to you in May, then we would have to actually do a substantial amendment to the plan, which would take about six months.
Okay, and then one last question, you kind of brought it up, the Home Repair Program.
Yes.
One of the things I hear from the public who have applied for this is you have to have home insurance in order to qualify for the loan, yet a lot of people, because of structural deficiencies that they wish to address with the loan, cannot receive homeowner insurance.
Correct.
Is that a federal guideline, HUD guideline?
It is not a federal requirement, but it is national best practice. If you're going to invest taxpayer dollars into someone's home, that it be insured against catastrophe.
Okay, so is that something we can talk about sometime, maybe about trying to figure out a plan? Because if we're having funds that aren't being spent on it, maybe coming up with a plan to help people get it up to the point where they can?
We're actually seeing more of the challenges around the, anything, the first $5,000 is a grant, so long as they stay in the unit for five years. The remainder, the $5,001 up to $25,000 is a loan. Some of the feedback we're hearing, that we've implemented a 10% match on the amount over $5,000. That seems to be more of the hiccup. And so it's been about a year and I've actually challenged the staff to look at the program plan to see if we have some other opportunities. So perhaps leveraging other, you know, other programs, connecting people to low-interest loans in the banking market. How can we help fill that gap? I even brought up the idea of them being able to pay that over time. They kind of cringed at me when I said that. But they are in the process of reviewing that program plan to try and make adjustments to make it easier for families to meet those requirements.
Okay, do we think this funding is under the microscope federally?
Absolutely, absolutely under the microscope. We have seen, I mean, it's all speculation at the moment. We have not received the allocations for the 2025 funding year. I would not even venture a guess as to what that's going to look like. The continuing resolution keeps our funding flat through, you know, the end of the fiscal year. So we just kind of watch and see what's happening. That is one nice thing about bringing back an annual action plan, and you'll see that in May, is if we decide not to do something in that plan because something has changed, we can come back in next year's plan and make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. Thank you, Sally. We'll now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. A majority of these homes reside in Councilmember Johnson's district. Councilmember Johnson.
I don't know why I hit that button, sorry. Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve the real estate contract and allocation of $575,000 in CDBG funds for acquisition and $900,000 for renovation of 12 public housing properties and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2025 Facilities Maintenance.
Good morning, Mayor. This item will be asking to initiate roughly 15 different CIP line items related to facilities maintenance. Our current asset listings and database that the money is intended to cover, we're at 575 buildings, 166 structures at 287 different sites comprising 7.4 million square feet. Now, related to the previous item, those numbers do not include housing. Those are totally separate from this. This is all non-housing assets. We also use a software tool, which we call the DST, Decision Support Tool, that analyzes the asset condition currently and then forecasts it out into the future, giving it different budget amounts and different strategies of what to fix and when, and telling us what the condition of those assets will be in future years so we can figure out what amounts to throw at it in each year. The CIP line items also are intended to cover unforeseen failures, its contingency. There's no dedicated contingency line, so any contingency is contained within the CIP lines. Back in February of 2020, we made a presentation to a council workshop, it took about an hour, from our prior director, Alan King, where we explained the DST-informed approach and adopted it. The modified approach, there were two approaches presented. Modified, which is what we follow now, it's a risk-based approach. So every asset has a consequence of failure score associated with it, a bit of a risk. And then throughout the asset's lifecycle within the simulation, it's doing a calculation on the risk in each individual year and figuring out the condition of that asset and multiplying that by the risk of the asset. Long story short, it's a risk-focused program to minimize consequence of failure of things breaking on us and so forth. Critical assets typically are these categories, structural roofing, preventing water infiltration in the building that's roofing, that's building envelope, walls, windows, that sort of thing. So as presented back in 2020, on the first column in the 2019-2028 CAP, those were the annual funding amounts for those categories in that year. And the recommended amount is showed in the 2020 recommend amount. That's what was recommended back in February of 2020. Your third column is where we're at today. Your third column is where we're at today. And in every case, except just slightly on the Parks and Rec Library Neighborhood City Halls, we've exceeded those recommendations. So thanks for giving us more money to achieve what we were trying to do at that time. That amount of money is what we call the maintained value amount of money. It is intended to flatline asset value. We're supposed to have the same asset value now as we will 40 years in the future in the simulation. So that's what the, the amount of money in the CIP is intended to do. It's essentially treading water. It's the stop-the-bleeding amount of money, so to speak. So asset degradation happens every year. We lose a certain amount of money. The amount of CIP that we recommended at that time, and we've exceeded now, was the amount of money to make that asset value the same in 40 years as it is, or was at the time. A couple of quick notes, the Parks and Rec Library Neighborhood City Halls, even though it's slightly less, we do have extra maintenance line items that are dedicated to specific things like audiovisual, security, energy, efficiency improvements that bring that number a little bit up. So I would say in every case, the current CIP amounts are above those 2020 recommended A metric that was presented back in the first presentation was FCI. It's a financial metric only of a building. It is everything that, I'd say it's the replacement cost of all assets within a building that are considered in a failed state. Does not mean they're broken. It just means they've exceeded their useful lifespan. So typically for a roof, that's 22 years. So you would have, in the calculation, if a roof is 21 years old, it doesn't count towards the top num, top-line number in the FCI. But as soon as it hits 22, then whatever it is, 100,000, 200,000, 5 million for the Century II roof, then all of that hits the top-line number. The building replacement cost is cost to build a new building, just like the one you have, excluding soft costs and demolition if it were necessary. The consultant at the time told us that we should probably try to hit a 10% target someday, but beyond that, we haven't received any other direction on which KPIs we were wanting to hit. So here's our progress from 2020 to 2025, and there's some huge caveats I need to add into this, because a lot has changed between the two. First line, buildings assessed. 2020, we got 378 out of what were then 541 buildings that we knew of at the time assessed. That was the most we could get done with the $300,000 budget we had at the time. As of today, we've had 430 of those assessed. The building replacement cost between those two asset databases, the enormous jump is because the original count didn't include Century II Expo Hall, and we also just had the brand-new Wichita Water Works water treatment facility built. Those are the huge changes that bring us up to over $2 billion in building replacement costs. And that's also why the overall FCI score looks much worse, is primarily because of the huge inclusion of Century II Expo Hall assets. It's a very large building. It's a big hit to the numerator on that FCI calculation. Yeah. And then further down, you got how many number of buildings we have in the good, fair, poor, critical categories. Couple of examples, Caltime Visitor Center, that's fairly new. We keep that in pretty good shape. City Arts is in fair condition. There's a little bit of work going on there. Fire Station 13, if anyone's been up there, that's up on north, around North Meridian and 235, uh, two, yeah, northwest side of town. That actually, interestingly enough, in the wind event about two weeks ago, had a portion of its roof blow off, so that's already been repaired. But that was a roof asset that was exactly at 22 years. Oddly enough, it decided to fail right at its end of life. And then Fire Station 8 is in the critical category. It's over 30%. But Fire Station 8 is intended to be replaced as the second fire station here shortly. Here's the general obligation line items. There's about 12 of them, if I remember correctly. Like I said, some of these are dedicated to certain groups. Some of them are dedicated to certain asset types. Around that, there's roughly 5 million. Here's a couple items that we'll be working with. Like I said, critical assets are what we focus on, so fire, life safety, that's top of the list almost always, followed by electrical work. That's the majority of what we've been doing lately. City Hall and a lot of the fire stations and Regional Training Center will get done, as well as the City Hall parking garage. There's a stair replacement on the west side of the building that's been shut down for some time and need of structural repairs. I'll give you some examples of that. This is what the stairs look like on the west side. We intend to replace these with fiberglass stairs, just like we have in some of the Old Town garages. Current estimate's over a quarter million dollars. This is what happens to concrete and steel after almost 30 years in the elements. So it's just due to be done. And then to give you an example of the structural repairs that were mentioned, what you're looking at is the concrete above the double doors between the elevator lobby and going out to where the cars are in the parking garage. I gave the picture on the left to give you an idea of what one would look like without any kind of damage to it, even though it's the same age. And then the one on the third floor, now you're looking at almost 30 years of water infiltration and salt from ice melt. So there's some, some concrete that needs replaced on there. We've already had structural engineer overlook at it. It's not any danger presently, but we do need to get on it. Funding summary for the TGT funds. We've got Century II cultural facilities, and then there's also some identified dedicated funding for Museum of World Treasures, some extra work there on the front doors, entryways, some fire suppression work that needs done. On the Century II improvements, that's shared duties between us and ASM. Going from the first year that that line appeared, roughly $6 million was dedicated from the city side and about $3 million from ASM side. That covered the blue dome roof replacement. And then going forward, the city identifies roughly $250,000 within the Century II improvement line, and ASM directs the rest. They're still doing some of the similar type of equipment work. We would do HVAC, security cameras, and rigging for their stages, which although not critical from in terms of keeping the building open, it is critical in terms of having shows in the building, so it's kind of important to have it up and running. The cultural facilities line tend to do some elevator repair refurbishment work this year. And as I said, the Museum of World Treasure specific funds, that's where the foundation's got a few cracks in it, fire suppression sprinklers and the entry doors. So with that, I would recommend the council approve the projects, adopt the bonding resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. No questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate all the work you're doing on this. How many, if we pass this, how many buildings is that moving out of the critical category?
I would have to run a simulation and find out and tell you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Could you give just a quick background on some of the ADA improvements?
Yeah, the ADA line, there was a city program where we had to do a whole bunch of improvements from a long time ago lawsuit. That's since been closed out. So ADA improvements now are as requested. So if we come across a sidewalk that needs the inclination changed, or if the handicap access buttons on the outside of a door aren't working, that's what that money is intended for.
Okay. So are, have we covered pretty much all of the complaints and concerns that came in with ADA?
Mm-hmm. As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have several questions regarding garages. So you've only touched upon the City Hall garage. What about the other garages?
I'll tell you, there is an RFQ that is active, RFP, sorry, active right now. We have already shortlisted the firms that will do a condition assessment of all eight city parking garages, not including the airport. I expect those interviews, I think, I saw, just saw on my calendar, the interviews are scheduled for the end of this month.
So this only accounts for properties that have been assessed so far, but not the garages themselves? And I know that during the presentations over the last few months, we've had double-digit amounts for maintenance of those garages. What was the amount that was previously stated regarding garages?
I think we had an estimate of 18 million, and that's without the assessment. That was an initial preliminary assessment.
Thank you. As someone who has been advocating for maintaining what you have and seeing this come before us, it really does make me realize, not just that there's a tool, but maybe the council should have gotten that presentation also. I know that it was 2020 that we've had that last presentation, and several of us were not on that council then. I would like to see a workshop that does talk about all of our buildings and how, hopefully, after the 5 million in improvements, they will be deemed in good use or in fair use, rather in this critical use period.
Mayor, I don't want to put all of you to sleep, but we do have some decision support tools for almost every class of infrastructure, so, and those have been presented over time, not at one meeting. More than happy to schedule that for other infrastructure as well. I know the focus today is on facilities. Your call, we can always do that.
I think it would be a good opportunity to, again, see all of our assets. As you mentioned, the number of assets have increased since 2020, and I'm sure some have deteriorated also over that time. One of those buildings that I still don't even see on here is the former Central Library. I know that the roof is getting renovated or replaced right now, which, by the way, what's the progress on that?
It's supposed to be finishing up within the next couple of weeks. They've had a number of weather delays.
Thank you. And also, as I've traveled across the city visiting fire stations, I've noticed a lot of deferred maintenance that troubles me. Even this past weekend, I visited Station 18, and the leaking roofs really bother me as these firefighters, again, these are their second home. And so I was glad to see that 1.1 million will be spent on fire facility maintenance. And I know that there's a decision support, support tool, but not everyone understands how those different fire stations are prioritized. And so I'd like that to be part of that conversation, so again, our firefighters know that they're not being forgotten and that there's an opportunity for them to even say, these are the major issues, and we'd like them to be addressed. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, I don't know if, I don't remember the name of that workshop, but it sounds like what the mayor is referring to is a workshop that we did where we had the decision support tool, and it went over some facilities, and I think fire and police were a part of that. It may have been 2020, I don't remember that year, but it kind of sounds like that was all-encompassing of that. Just an updated version of that one.
That would be great. I think in the presentation, it said, I didn't know which month in 2020, but it would be a really great opportunity for this council to see, five years later, what that is looking like, in particular to public safety buildings, so police and fire, and our critical infrastructure, obviously, water, sewer. I know we're making major investments in water and the sewer system, but if we can have that, that might be able to tailor the conversation a little bit more and focused. Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. We'll now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Since this falls under all districts, I move to approve the projects, adopt the bonding resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Supplemental design agreement number two, revised budget and public art for improvements to Douglas from Seneca to Meridian.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities for the record. I will kick this agenda item off, and then I will turn it over to Lindsey partway through. Little bit of background on this project. In July of 2022, the City Council approved a design agreement with WSP and original budget of $225,000. In September of 2023, the City Council approved design concept and revised budget of $935,000. And on August 5th of last year, Design Council approved 30% design concept for public art. The adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes $400,000 in general obligation bonds for public art and $1.82 million in LST funding for right-of-way construction, railroad cost, and project management. Location of this project, again, is from Douglas, on Douglas from Seneca to Meridian. The, the east end is more commercial, and going through west of the tracks turns into residential. Throughout the corridor, there is poor drainage as well as pavement deterioration that will be improved with the project. And the proposed concept for a typical block is one lane each direction with a two-way center-left turn lane and defining the existing on-street parking with curb extensions at the intersections, as well as making pedestrian improvement crossings and relocating some of the existing crossings so that they serve, better serve some of the adjacent area. And again, we will construct a curb extension at those locations to shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians. And I will turn it over to Lindsey to walk through the public art.
Thank you, Paul. Lindsey Bonaka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services for the record. So I'll walk you through the public art project that's proposed as part of this overall project design. So WSP is the prime consultant that's leading the entirety of the design project. There's, they make up a design team that includes Landwork Studios as the LA and Kent Williams as the art consultant. And the, the project itself is designated a special consideration project by the Design Council, and as you saw on a previous slide, $400,000 has been allocated for public art in the 2024 fiscal year, so previous fiscal year. A little bit about our selection process, because we've refined it over the last few years. In June of '23, an RFQ was issued in On Cafe, CallForEntry.org, which is a new platform, or was a new platform at the time, it's become our standard. And that was issued by WSP and with our, our consultant Kent Williams. Professional artists from the region were invited to apply. Of that, we had 19 artists submit for the two different sites that we had available. Six finalists were selected by a seven-member committee comprised of the design team members, Delano stakeholders and business owners, and city staff. In November of 2023, artist Armando Manias of Del Norte Studio here, an artist of Wichita, and the artist team of George Peters and Melanie Walker of Airworks Studio of Boulder, Colorado, were awarded the public art commissions for both, for Site A and Site B respectively. And then in August of last year, the Design Council approved the 30% concept design for public art. So this is where I maybe want to pause and just talk about why we're bringing this project to you today. Because public art has been such a, a topic for conversation over these last few months, we wanted to bring a project early on in the design phase to showcase kind of not just the process, but give an opportunity for feedback. I, I will say that this is concept design. No further design work has happened. There's other iterations of design work that happen, so you're seeing a very early iteration of a design, not what the final product is going to look like. And we're hoping that this can be our new standard moving forward, so that way we're not sinking cost into a project if there are design requests or changes to designs being requested by City Council or Design Council. So the project approach for this one in particular was thematic. That would be rooted in the Chisholm Trail and, which has a deep history in Delano, while also reflecting and celebrating the Delano of today. Two sites were identified for art objects to be installed. Site A will provide an iconic gateway to the neighborhood, and Site B would activate the areas along Douglas for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So here's kind of an aerial of Site A of where it would be at, Meridian and Douglas. The concept approach for, from the artist is to create an elegant and dramatic gateway into the Delano neighborhood, using bold forms to be experienced both by drivers and pedestrians. The design concepts are derived from two main visual elements, the elegant headdresses worn by Wichita tribal leaders and warriors, and the graceful horns of the Texas Longhorn. And we'll see some imagery moving forward here. Here's the proposed concept design, again, at the 30% design element. Here you can see the headdresses worn by Wichita tribal leaders and how that design is reflected by the artist. And then here you can see the, the design work of the iconic Texas Longhorn. Texas Longhorn. These are some possible materials that might be used. Obviously, we're still early in design and construction, or design in bid phase, so we don't know what the final product will look like or what the materials will be exactly, but these were some of the options that the artists presented. So possible concrete and mosaic tile or wood, and the pedestals could be concrete, brick, or sandstone, just depending on what the design, how the design progresses and what budget can allow. Moving on to Site B, this project is entitled Feather Flight. They are kinetic sculptures by George Peters and Melanie Walker of Airworks Studio. The concept approach for this part of the project was to honor Delano's early aviation history and Wichita's nation inhabit, Wichita nation inhabitants. And it's inspired by feathers and the concept of flight. So we have some, some large poles with, with a nod to feathers and aviation that would be moving at the top of those poles. Some more information about the concept design. It would be a series of five to eight sculptures, just depending on budget and depending on, on where the locations would be selected. The feather wind vanes would be set atop a 25-foot tapered aluminum flagpole. For reference, we were in a meeting earlier this week, and a stoplight is about 22, 22 feet tall. So this would be just, just slightly above what a stoplight would be in height. There would be a rocker and a pivot point at the intersection of the top of the, the top connection that will allow for free and gentle movements in all winds. And the kinetic sculptures will rock up and down and turn with the wind. They're rated for 150 miles per hour in wind speed. I will just pause and note that there's a comparative mechanism in a sculpture at WSU in the Ulrich's Public Art Collection. And from what we can tell, it's only been had to have some sort of maintenance once in 30 years, so we think that that structure is reasonable within our weather elements. Some additional information about the concept design is the, the feather wind vanes are approximately 10 feet long with an approximately two feet wide. Again, this is early design phase, so we don't know the exact dimensions. Each would be three-dimensional unit and have three fins that would be edged in aluminum. The feather material will be clear polycarbonate with an adhesive prismatic mylar that reflects the changing pattern of the colors and each movement of the feathers, and that, that color would be casted down on the sidewalk or on the pavement as the sculpture moves. So we have a couple different options for site, citing these works, and it really just depends on where the exact curb extensions are going to end up. There's a couple different recommendations from the artists and design team of either kind of sprinkling them through the project location or clustering them. The Design Council and the projects, the project team's preference is to cluster them, but again, it just depends on where the exact curb extensions will end up. Here's kind of just an overview of the timeline and the process development for, for design work. So we're on bullet point number three right now, is seeking council approval of the design concept itself. Based on feedback we received today, the designs will be further developed and refined in collaboration with artists and, and the design team. After that, the, the project still goes back to the Design Council for 90% in concept design approval and final design. There's a couple options there. If the Design Council approves the final design, that goes to fabrication. If the Design Council makes additional recommendations for changes, the project could then return if significant revisions are required, but that's our process kind of from start to finish. And the recommended action today is to approve the revised budget, public art concept design supplemental design agreement, and adopt the amending resolution. Paul and I are available for questions, and our consultant for this project is also available.
Thank you, Lindsey. We'll begin with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. So regarding the 30% approval for why it's brought before this board, is there still an opportunity for this to be brought to my district advisory board?
For the art specifically, it can be. We don't traditionally bring the art to, to DABs. That's why we have the Design Council as our advisory board on art, but we can if requested.
Yeah, we had the art pieces for the installation of the new library at Alfa Branch. They've come for the past four DABs and asked for feedback. And so I'd be interested, the DAB members, I think, gave good feedback, especially about the district and how we can reflect that as well. So I might be interested in that. I have a meeting on Monday, even if it's just a presentation, so we can get just feedback. It doesn't have to be formalized or anything.
Can do.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I think if Councilmember Glasscock's going to do that, since we split Douglas, we should probably do it at District 6. Or if you want to just have a meeting where we encourage Delano or anybody else, I mean, happy to do that, too. But yeah, I think, I think that's maybe a good option to look at. Personally, I like the cluster idea if, as opposed to them being kind of spread out. I really love the entrance to Delano. I really, I like the mosaic, to be honest, but I think all of that looks really great, and I like the Longhorns tied in with the Delano path park that goes all the way down to the river. I do have some questions about the feather portion. I know we talked a little bit about that before, but I would be curious to see if, I'm not really sure, I'm not, I'm not an artist, but I, maybe they could just fine-tune those ideas or something. I, when I just look at it, I have some questions on the feather part, but I think there's a lot of opportunity, maybe with just a little bit of feedback. I love the idea, but maybe we can just work on it like a little bit more. And yeah, I'm super excited. I feel like we've been talking about this for a very long time, and I'm really excited to see that we're getting a few steps closer to actually completing the project. So, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Will this be the last time this comes before the council?
It would be. We can bring it back upon request. Typically, it would just go through Design Council for final approval, and that's where, when we consider bringing it at 30% or final design, by the time we get to final design, we're pretty close to construction. So there's not a lot of opportunity for wholesale changes. If there's massive changes requested, we would like them to happen right now. But we, upon request, we can.
Yeah, I will echo Councilman Ballard's comments. I think A, fantastic. I think it fits Delano very much. I have more concerns about B, especially probably response from community members. And so I'm just trying to figure out the best way to handle that as, I necessarily not in favor of B as it stands right now. I know that we're probably going to get pushback if B got approved today as well. So that would be my only concern, is if we approve this at 30% design, it doesn't come back before the council. Theoretically, the Design Council cannot move forward with any of the recommendations from this body or the concerns from Councilman Ballard and I. And I know we've talked to Paul about it, we both have. And so that would be my only concern about moving forward. If you can assure me that those concerns will be taken into consideration, I might feel more comfortable as well.
I can definitely make sure that council members whose districts are affiliated with the projects are invited to participate in the Design Council approval process, or at the Design Council meetings where those take place, so you see the conversation and can weigh in and help advise Design Council as well. It should be symbiotic relationship between City Council and the Design Council on what the best step forward is. I will say at this point in the project, because we're just at the concept approach, there hasn't been public engagement just yet on the project. All of our projects have public engagement, so that could help steer the project accordingly. I know with the library project, we had a couple different public engagement opportunities after design concept that really shifted where that project went. So the designs you see today are by no means end-all-be-all. If we're not liking the design in any fashion and we want to scrap that, this is kind of our opportunity to do that. Or do we want to see it refined? Or do we like the initial idea but are worried about the, the final product? Those are kind of where we would just appreciate some guidance from council on where you'd like us to go.
Councilman Ballard.
When is your next DAB? Maybe delay this for three weeks, just so both DABs can hear it. Mayor, I've, I've got a suggestion if that would be all right. In order for us to be able to continue to move forward with the project, the council may want to consider the supplemental design agreement approval, the revised budget approval, and then holding off on the public art design, approval of the public art design concept. And then that will allow you to come back and discuss that, but at least we've got everything continuing going forward with design.
So would that amended motion be recommend that City Council approve the revised budget supplemental design agreement and adopt the amending resolution and authorize the necessary signatures?
Yes, I believe so.
Just removing the approval of the public art design, just for community feedback, and then it would come back before us?
Yes.
I feel comfortable with that, if, Councilman.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think it's important to, either for us to participate in the Design Council. I just don't want to delay the project like any longer, because, and I know we're really early in that process. I just don't want to be the delay for an already really long process. So.
That's why we suggested the motion the way I did. That way, all you have is really just to focus in on that second design element. We'll try to get it wrapped up, and then we obviously want to get it wrapped up within the next 30 days, so that would allow you to have public input and also maybe participate with the Design Council based on the input, public input and your concerns. Shouldn't delay the rest of the project, I don't believe.
No, I would just encourage the supplemental design agreement be approved, because right now the, the artists are not on full contract, so for them to do any design development, we would need some sort of contract. Otherwise, they're, they're on hold right now.
When we get to that area. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with Councilmember Ballard and Glasscock. I really like A, I like the mosaic, as Ballard said. Not real excited about B. I would, I would like, you know, Delano is not just a neighborhood center, it's a regional draw. I'd like to have our, our District 5 council look at it also for some input. I know a lot of our residents do go down to, to Delano, Old Town, so I would like to have some input, too, from District 5.
May I ask if it would be appropriate, just because now we're at three districts, would a community meeting be sufficient if we hosted a special meeting based on this project? Seeing some head nods, so we'll look at calendars and figure out that opportunity.
Right. Councilmember Ballard.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Can we go back to page one, or slide 175 regarding the feathers? I know you mentioned the Ulrich Museum has a kinetic sculpture, and it only has had maintenance once. That is my biggest concern, just on the heels of the last council item about maintaining what we have. These new structures, since they are moving pieces, and we know it's very windy here in Wichita, I'm concerned about the maintenance moving forward. While Ulrich might have had one instance, this is multiple pieces, and that, again, gives me grave concern that if it fails, you would need additional dollars to try to maintain it. So I think, do you know if that one piece at Ulrich, what did that look like versus what this looks like?
I can't speak to that specific work of art. Jana, if you would be interested. We can't speak on that specific piece, but I would say we're so early in the design process, we don't necessarily have a maintenance plan in place, but part of the completion of all projects is a maintenance plan that has to be approved by the city. So we never want to acquire something that we're not going to be able to take care of, and that's part of the design process as well. Is this feasible? Can we actually accommodate this? And that's something that the Design Council brings up on every single work of art, regardless if it has a moving piece or not, is can we responsibly take care of this? Over the past couple of years, we've now added part of our, the Person for Art Fund, 10% of that fund can be used for maintenance, which has been a really great opportunity for us to, to get the collection back up to, to its maintenance needs. And if acquired correctly, this would just fall into our normal maintenance routine, and with regular maintenance, I wouldn't anticipate any challenges. I think in a previous slide or future slide, right now, the structure is rated for 150 miles per hour wind speed. That would be sufficient for our area to its current, to, to what our current needs are, but all, all sites would be, or all pieces would be engineered appropriately to make sure that we could maintain them, but valid concern.
Thank you. And then my next question is about Project A or Site A. Knowing that the pedestal would be at the start of, is it Douglas and Meridian?
Douglas and Meridian. A lot of folks consider Delano obviously starting at the river. Would there be, what would be the opportunity, or is there an opportunity to even have bookends, basically?
Anything is possible. It would be my short answer, but this project's scope is Seneca to Meridian, so it wouldn't go to the river. I would say, from a cultural icon standpoint, the Clock Tower, it would be our incap on the other end of Delano. But for a future project consideration, we could look at expanding it or having a mirrored image of this gateway on the river, if funding and project availability were to permit.
Thank you, Lindsey. Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in both Councilmember Glasscock and Councilmember Ballard's districts. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. With a motion of the City Council approve the revised budget supplemental design agreement number two, adopt the amending resolution and authorize the necessary signatures, justification for this is allow this come back before council for the approval of the actual public art design.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Selection of appeal panel to hear denial of security permit.
Mayor, council, this is a matter that comes before you from the clerk's office. City ordinance prescribes a process for appeal panels from a staff decision, and it's time to have a selection of an appeal panel for this item. There's a strict process on how the rotation should occur. The panel of three council members shall be chosen on a rotating basis by district numbers one through six, with the mayor being number seven in that rotation. Each panel shall be chosen by numerical order, and so no, we're, we've, the agenda report shows that the last districts were one, three, and four. So numerically, I think the representation would, rotation would go to six, five, six, and seven. That's my recommendation.
I approve that. So I will move to recommend that council members for District 5, JB Johnston, Councilmember for District 6, Maggie Ballard, and the mayor will serve on this three-member panel to preside over administrative appeals of the denial of permits.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Discussion of proclamation procedures.
Members of the council, over the last couple of weeks, the mayor and I have talked about the proclamation process and thought it'd be good to bring this issue to the council today for some additional discussion. Just a, just a tiny bit of background. Actually, what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of background on proclamations, talk about our process until very recently, some recommended changes that we're going to make internally in the process, and then tee up a few questions or policy issues for your discussion. Again, just as background, proclamations are considered to be a courtesy for the residents of Wichita. They're meant to be really kind of a celebration to increase awareness of an important issue, to celebrate an annual event, or to honor a group's accomplishment. The proclamation is not legally binding and is only honorary in nature, so it's not considered the same as an ordinance, for instance. Each proclamation is reviewed and approved by the mayor and council by majority. Just a reminder of everything that's required for someone who submits a request for a proclamation. There's information on the requister, there's information on the event or the action that is to be highlighted or recognized, and then some questions about how do you want the proclamation to be presented, here at council or at another location? And then some questions about how do you want the proclamation to be presented, here at council or at another location? Our current process is that when we receive a request, an email is sent out to the mayor and council members, and they're asked to respond to staff with either approval or denial. And then those votes are recorded by staff. If there are four approvals that are received, then we move forward with that. A missing vote, I think it's important to note that a missing vote doesn't mean a rejection. You all because of your schedules, many times people don't have an opportunity to respond. But what we, what's important is that we get some majority either in favor of or opposed to the proclamation. If we don't get to that four, we'll continue to work with council to try to get some consensus. And then if there is no consensus, as we reach the final date for the issuance of the proclamation, and actually it's the Wednesday before the council meeting, then the proclamation will not be issued. If the proclamation request is not approved, or if we can't get consensus, then we immediately tell the requister. So when the proclamation is drafted, usually there's a draft that's submitted by the requister. It's then presented, excuse me, it's presented to the mayor and the mayor's special assistant. We do it on paper. And then there are edits that are normally made in order to improve its readability, to deal with grammar and context issues, as well as the length of the proclamation. Those edits are made by the mayor and the special assistant. Edits are then returned to council staff and then requested changes are made. And then an electronic signature is added to the document. So as we know, a couple of weeks ago, we had some bumps in the proclamation process. It started off with a misunderstanding from a staff in terms of what exactly should be or not be on the proclamation. And that was not clear to staff. And then as a result of that, we also didn't have guidance, which we've now received from the Law Department, that all proclamations have to be treated like ordinances and resolutions, and they have to have a signature on those. So we have come up with a process that we think will prevent any future issues or misunderstandings regarding proclamations. First of all, we're going to put the proclamations in electronic form, in a shared file. Then that will be processed through with, again, the mayor and special assistant, but their edits will then be tracked electronically. So that, and that will show who made the edits and when they made the edits. And then that'll be returned to council staff. The council then, the staff will then produce the final proclamation that'll be consistent with the edits. And then electronic signature will be added to all proclamations. So that's where we are right now in our recommendations on how to tighten this up internally. Now, in terms of changes in the process, the mayor has asked that there be consideration of changing the language regarding the resolution itself. And that was one of the points of confusion that we had two weeks ago. So the mayor has suggested this language. I know there's been some discussion among council members regarding the voting process and approval of proclamations. So I thought you may want to visit with that, about that today as well. And then during our discussion, there was a question about, are there other forms of recognition for community efforts that maybe don't warrant a proclamation, or maybe are a substitute or a supplement to the proclamation process? A few years ago, Mayor Whipple talked about, I think, certificates of merit. And there have been other discussions, I think, even prior to that about, are there other ways to recognize achievements of people in the community? I don't know if you want to go down that path at all, but I just bring that up because that has been discussed in the past. And I think I've, I know I've heard a couple of people talk about that over the last couple of weeks. So I throw that out for you. This is where I politely sit down and let you talk through this, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about process.
Yeah. I think, can you please clarify and explain the situation that happened two weeks ago, the process and the breakdown in that process?
Sure. So Mayor, I've put as fine a point on it as I can. The mayor suggested edits to the proclamation. And in that, she asked for this language to be substituted in terms of now there it be resolved by. And she asked that it be the City Council and not be the mayor and City Council. Staff misunderstood and thought that that edit also applied to the signature line. And so the signature, electronic signature was not attached to the proclamation. So that's, that's probably about as close as I can come to explaining what happened and the misunderstanding on staff in terms of what the mayor's wishes.
Did the mayor refuse or decline to sign?
No, not to my knowledge.
Can you say that again?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you. And then I would like to know, one more time, how is the signature applied currently and in the future?
It's an electronic signature, Mayor.
Can you go back to that slide, please?
Oops, sorry.
So the mayor does not use a pen to sign these proclamations, but rather it's an electronic signature? Is that correct?
That is correct.
How long has the electronic signature been applied to proclamations here at the city?
Mayor, I don't know that.
Approximate time.
I don't know because I'm not involved in that process, so I don't know how long that's been a practice.
Obviously during this council, can you say whether it was in the previous council as well?
I can't because I don't know that process. I don't. I just don't know. I've never been involved in the proclamation process, so I've never paid attention to. I usually don't even receive those in my council packets, so I don't know. I'm assuming that we've used electronic signatures because that is part of the process today, but I don't know when it started.
You don't know when it started, but do you know if it also was applied during the previous mayor's time?
No, and I don't have a staff person here that could tell me that.
I would like someone from staff to be able to answer that, as I have a proclamation from 2020 that also had an electronic signature. So again, I want to record the time when electronic signatures started getting put onto proclamations and rather than with an actual pen signing every one of these proclamations. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Could we go back to slide, I think, one ninety? So I guess just kicking off conversation, I don't think any of these changes really are necessary personally. I think it's special to have the mayor's name, whomever it is, in a proclamation. I've received a few from different governors. I can always point out to a specific governor or person. When I received it, I think that's special to community members. I know it was for me. I've received some from the City Council before I was on council. So I think it is significant to show who the mayor was at the time, as well as the City Council approving. So personally, I don't think that should change. Voting process wise, I acknowledge there's probably been, I'll give myself five, that over my two terms, I may have not seen in my email and maybe not voted for. I'm always happy to say yea or nay if I would have voted for something, but I think, again, if we move forward with a majority process, as it has been, we've not had any issues up until now. And that won't slow the process down for anybody requesting a proclamation. So I really don't see a need to change that process either. Council has several forms of recognition. A proclamation is one that is special for whatever person or group requests it because the council, a majority, would say yea or nay to it. We also have certificates of recognition, which I give out regularly for people who want to recognize a birthday or something that doesn't rise to the level of a proclamation. So I don't really think there's a need for this. And I also think on proclamations, and I wasn't there the whole time when this thing happened, but I do know that the last two mayors and now this one, there's multiple opportunities to review a proclamation for what it's, what it looks like, whether it's before it's officially printed or not. I look at every proclamation that I'm asked to read off-site, even though I know it's usually correct. So I think with multiple opportunities to review, I believe there was probably multiple opportunities to review for this, that we don't really need to change anything. I appreciate having this conversation in the public, but this process isn't broken. I really don't think it needs to be fixed.
Councilmember Johnson, I will quickly make a comment. I see the Wichita Eagle here today, and I actually got an email on March twenty-fifth telling me that they were going to be invoiced one hundred and twelve dollars for a record to simply find out who voted for proclamations. And I believe that's outrageous. I believe that the votes, whether by email or here before you, as we speak about the topic, should be made public and should not require media to have to pay one hundred and twelve dollars in order to find out who voted for, against, or abstained from voting. So I do think that the process is broken and it does need fixing. So I would be the first to say that I want these votes to be out in the public versus via email. I think it is prudent for community to know what council members/mayor believe, approve, deny, or abstain from. And so I think that the system is actually broken. So I want to see change, and that is the reason why I encourage city manager to provide a clear process so that people could see what currently is happening with proclamations and how it can improve. And then now we're moving towards the more policy discussion about, let's talk about what's the purpose of a proclamation. Let's talk about how to make it public so people and media can see who votes for and against, as well as abstains from these proclamations.
Well, Mayor, real quick, you mentioned three things. So Cora is also paying for staff time to get all of the information that they were looking for together. We approved, I think, some changes to that process twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty twenty-two. Can't remember, a couple of years ago. So the media is aware of that and looking for emails. I think a really simple solution that doesn't require, again, all of these changes is to take the form that's being used now that shows the council members who approved and just put it online. And then you can see who voted in favor, who didn't vote, although we shouldn't be abstaining as council members. We are elected to vote, so we should be voting for that. If there's something where we missed an email, staff could reach out to us and get a response to that. But it's simpler to take the form that's being filled out now when we say approve or not. Just put that online. That cuts down all that ease of access for the media, so they don't have to do a Cora request and it's there and open. But we should be voting. And I don't think that there's a reason to abstain on a proclamation. And again, proclamations are significant to various groups. It means a whole lot. For us, it may just be an approve or deny every week because we get a lot. But for the people who receive it, it really means a big deal. And I know it did for us when we did, I think it was baseball night in Wichita at Lawrence Dumont Stadium, and we had Mayor, I think it was Longwell, come out and he read it at the stadium and it was a great night. It means a lot to the people requesting it. So again, I don't think there's a lot of changes necessary.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Were these proposed changes reflected in the proclamations that were read today?
I don't remember.
Yes, they were.
Councilmember.
I asked Legal whether or not this fell under the privy of legally binding language. And according to Legal, because it's the majority of the council that voted, it should say, now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim. And according to Legal, it did not preclude having to have the mayor's name on there. And to clarify Councilmember Johnson's comments, the mayor's signature and name is on the proclamation. So the mayor's name and signature is already on the document. So this is a double opportunity, I guess, to have the mayor have a lot more recognition, when I don't believe the mayor needs to have extra recognition, but rather the Wichita City Council's majority voted to proclaim this day to be whatever it is. Councilmember Ho.
Oh, I'm not.
Councilmember Ballard.
Yep. So these changes were made without us voting on changes? That's correct? Okay, I don't like that. I thought I noticed it when she read them. I mean, we also didn't take a vote for this to be on today's agenda, like four of us to vote to give direction to staff to put, I don't know, I think if we're going to follow the rules, we need to follow all of the rules and I'm not sure that's being done right now.
Councilmember, if I could, I had notes from two weeks ago that said that you wanted the proclamation process to maybe come back at a workshop. And I thought that putting on here met that intent.
All of, all of the rules. Another question is, why doesn't the mayor physically sign proclamation? I mean, I think you sign stuff all the time. I don't know why this would be any different than we can just eliminate the electronic signature. That way you know what you're signing. You know, I don't know if that's an option or opportunity to explore. I think that could prevent some of the confusion. And also a question maybe for the mayor, or I guess anybody on the council. If you don't support it, do you think that you should be presenting it? I know there's been other opportunities where specifically Councilmember Tuttle, you know, has taken a big lead in the firefighter cancer initiative and maybe she could have had the opportunity to read it, but you know, it was for the mayor. And I know I've come down to stand with you for Junior League and stuff like that. So, you know, there's other council members that have, you know, taken the lead on some of these projects, but you've been pretty adamant about you reading them until this whole situation happened a couple of weeks ago. So you know, it just makes me wonder, like, have you presented other proclamations in the past that you either didn't respond to or missed it or didn't vote, or you know, maybe you didn't say no, but maybe you didn't get back to it. And, but you have still presented them. So I mean, I just would be curious on the thought process there. Thank you.
Again, I will reiterate what I said two weeks ago. Since this was a first proclamation ever presented by the city of Wichita, I wanted to give the honor and yield the floor to the four individuals who voted for it. And I, again, will stand by that. I did not refuse to read it. Rather, I yielded the floor to the four individuals who voted for it, who were obviously passionate about it. And I think that that was out of respect. And so, again, moving forward, I do believe that there's opportunities for improvement in not only the process of proclamations, but reading proclamations. I know that last, two months ago, when it was Black History Month, there were some proclamations that I was not invited to read. And I'm glad that Councilmember Johnson was able to present them. And so, again, I think that the language actually is very clear now that where it says now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim really represents all seven of us, but really a majority having voted. And still, the signature of the mayor and the name of the mayor still remain on a proclamation. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick questions here, specifically about the edits. Do we see, okay, what happens if the edits come back and they're not agreed on by the person who who proposed the proclamation?
It's an interesting question, Councilmember, because I don't know that we circle back with the sponsor or the submitter at all. Those edits normally are very simple, usually not content related. But I can't, I don't know that I've ever heard of a sponsoring organization or individual that objected to the language. So I would tell you that in most cases, or probably all the cases, it doesn't undermine this, the nature of the proclamation. It's just to clean it up.
I mean, I can understand that. I'm just trying to make sure because there's a potential there for some things that are pertinent to what they're trying to say, some opportunity for that to go away.
I will note that in the new form or the new process, those are electronic changes made in a shared file. And if the council wanted access to that before the proclamation was eventually issued, that, we do have that shared file. So I mean, I guess that would be a check in that regard.
I can appreciate that. Also, do we, do they do the edits before or after the vote? Because I don't want to vote for something or against something and then find out later that the language has been changed that alters kind of the spirit of what they're, they're trying to pursue here. Yeah, that's another consideration there. Do we see the edits before or after we vote?
Member Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob, for your work on this. And I'm quite sad that we're spending time on this. I issued proclamations, asked for proclamations in the community before I was in council for issues that were important to me. And it was done in the spirit of raising awareness. And I always felt respected and quite honored to be able to come and stand at the podium in front of the eleven. in front of the electeds of our community. So I do respect the process. I see the value of it. And I have a great deal of, you know, I want to see the process of having proclamations continue. I think we can figure out the portion about signatures, clean it up, whatever. But we will have to change our ordinance because the ordinance now says proclamations will be signed by the mayor and issued at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So either they're all going to be signed by the mayor, then none of them are going to be signed by the mayor. But I don't think it can be any other way because that's not fair to the community and it's very inconsistent and it's not transparent. I think while we're pausing and taking this opportunity to look at this and having some robust discussion, also the reading process should be reviewed. I don't think that, I wish that the process would have gone differently for the people who issued the proclamation a few weeks ago. As I mentioned, we will have to obviously revise the ordinance. So I just think if we're going to do it, let's rip off the Band-Aid and look at how we read them, as well as how we sign them so it's fair and consistent and transparent to the community. Thank you.
I will add a point of clarification. City manager, again, that the mayor refused or declined to sign the document.
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So the law or ordinance in municipal code says that the mayor's signature does apply to these documents. And again, I believe the city manager just answered the question. So just for point of clarification, I did not vote for the proclamation, but I did not refuse or decline to sign this document. Again, as these documents are signed electronically and applied to the document by staff. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick point of clarification for Councilman Ballard's point. We didn't vote and Councilmember agenda to bring this forward. We also didn't vote to take property rights away and have that conversation on a council agenda. That was brought by one member to have a conversation from this bench. And we had a legally binding action there. We're not having a legally binding action here. Second off, I do believe that the current process is a secret ballot. I don't believe it's transparent. I think we should be open to the public. To Councilman Johnson's point, maybe we just add it to the minutes. Maybe we continue voting via email and then we just add it to the minutes. So there's some public record, so the media doesn't have to request that. I think that's maybe a compromise solution that we might be able to look at. So it's still recorded publicly. Because obviously the status quo isn't working if the media has to request information. And this isn't the first time the media has requested information of a proclamations and it won't be the last time. And so I think that's just a more transparent process. I think this council wants to be more transparent. And that's an easy fix to just add it to the minutes in the future as well. Regarding language of the city council, I don't care. I think it could be the, therefore be resolved that Wichita City Council does proclaim. We are one governing body. And I don't know if we single out one individual. The mayor has equal voting rights with every other member on this body. So I'm fine with Wichita, maybe you say Wichita City Council and mayor. And maybe we just don't say the mayor by name. I don't really have a strong opinion either way. One thing that I would be interested that might be able to fix some of these regarding, you know, edits. Often proclamations will come forward and they have grammatical errors or they'll have spelling errors. Or I've questioned multiple times if even some of the information and proclamations over the course of the past year have been accurate. We just rely on the submitter regarding the accuracy of proclamations. And so I'd be interested if there was, you know, people could still submit their interest in a proclamation, but it has to be sponsored by maybe a member on the council. That way, as Councilman Tuttle had said as well, that maybe we change the process. We read it, the individual that's sponsoring the proclamation is the one that reads it. And so an individual can still request. So the process would be an individual could still request a proclamation as is and list who they want to be the sponsor of the proclamation. And the individual can say yes or no. They can be the ones to read the proclamation. Because often we are requested to go to events to read proclamations. And so when Councilman Johnson goes to an event, if he's requested, then he can automatically be the one to read it. Because I often see that on proclamation requests as well. Because already, it already actually asks that question of, do you want this presented? And if so, what council person do you want to present it? Maybe that's just the person that reads it from the bench. I think that's an easy fix. So my suggestions, we would be doing this. And I think this would provide the accountability. Because if you have a sponsor, they can help edit it to make sure it's factually correct, doesn't have grammatical errors. They could be the one to read it. It's also more special to the individual or the organization to have a member that's passionate about the issue. Again, Councilman Tuttle is passionate about childcare. She should probably be the ones reading childcare proclamations. And then maybe just add it to the minutes to be more transparent process. That way we can still vote via email, but it still comes before. So those would be my suggestions.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Try to answer you before I get to my notes. I agree with putting it in the packet. But I would suggest maybe once a month at the consent meeting. That way it's just not every week trying to do that. Once a month, it's in there, everyone knows where to look. So council approves that with consent. So I don't disagree with that, like that suggestion. I was going to say, because at first I said I didn't necessarily agree that all of this needed to happen. I feel that way, but the tracking sheet is a good update. I think just because it shows who is doing what, I would make one suggestion to the tracking sheet. And that's adding a comment to who is requesting, whatever that change might be. So I'll use myself as an example. I got a Black History Month, that wasn't what it was called, Black Educators Hall of Fame proclamation request that came in, council approved it. The requister had like some language he wanted added to it. It wasn't in there. I asked for some language changes, but I worked with that requister as well as city staff. So the comment would show Councilmember Johnson requested this. That way you can point back to I was the one. So if they're not happy with the way it reads, I'm at fault and my name's in there. So I think we should add comment notes on that. That way it's not staff getting blamed if one of us was actually doing it, in that case, me. I will not die on the hill about the name. I don't think it needs to change, but if the majority of the council agrees with that the Wichita City Council does proclaim, okay. I will say there was a question earlier about working with the respondent. I just gave one example, but I've done that from time to time. If somebody requests a proclamation, is this what you want to say? Or this year is off? Or, you know, just making sure that language is right. So it does happen. Historically, from what I've seen, it's up to us if we work with city staff and that person making the request to make sure the language is right and the message that they want to convey. It has happened, doesn't happen all the time, but it has. And then I forgot to respond earlier to the mayor, the questions to the manager about process. From the whole time I've been elected, I've never seen a manager, assistant city managers, dealing with the proclamation. It's always, it's been in-house downstairs, mayor, mayor's assistant, and city staff going over reviews of changes and all that. So I will say, I believe Mayor Longwell did hand sign a few proclamations, depending on what it was, but also electronic signature. And I've seen that with both the prior mayors. Can't speak for before that, but the electronic signature is used the most. But again, I wouldn't expect anybody else to know that except for down there. I think that's all my notes that I had for conversations so far.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you be willing to entertain hand signing them all as opposed to the electronic signature? That way you know what you're signing and is that something that you would be interested in?
I would be okay with that. I know that it does put extra amount of time to this proclamation process. So I would now like to really be able to delay. Because right now I think we have 10 proclamations that have been on hold since this conversation. Because we still wanted to, again, provide the opportunity for the community to be able to see who votes for what. I still believe that it should be even more transparent. I believe that it should come back every week in our consent agenda so you can see it. These are the proclamations that came in. So far, these are the individuals who voted yea, nay, or have not responded. And then it provides, again, that checks and balance so that you have greater transparency with community. But that will also delay the process for staff. And I don't know if staff is able to continue, would be able to do a new process like that where it would be added into our consent agenda. So again, anyone can pull the consent agenda items at any point in time.
I would say, okay, sorry, I just have one more question. And then I know repeatedly, over the last couple of weeks, you have mentioned that you did not ask staff to remove your name. So I guess in the conversation of edits, what were your edits to the proclamation if they weren't removing your name or the signature part where it says therefore be resolved?
That's why this slide is up. I removed I Lilly Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita.
That's what the edit was?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give my view of proclamations. I think it should be for organizations that are doing something positive in the community. Salvation Army, Quality Bay Clinic, things like that. Pitch there. I just, I have come over the past year and three months not to vote for any ethnic group or subset of people to pull them out of and recognize them. And I've been consistent on that. So two of the three I voted for today, one I did not. Wasn't because I'm against that group at all. It's just that I think my view is proclamations should be for organizations making a positive, positive impact on the community. Not that other groups are not making a positive impact, I understand that. But I just really think that it shouldn't just be for everything. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston, can I just add one point of clarification? I asked Sedgwick County to provide me their proclamation policy. And in their proclamation policy, it says, "Proclamations are issued for organizations with countywide, regional, or statewide interests. Proclamations will not be issued to endorse or promote a private for-profit business that competes with similar for-profit businesses, or to endorse or promote a partisan political position or candidate." And they have other points that they also mentioned. And I don't know if we have all this in our municipal code. So I would ask law to let us know. Because this would be now a policy discussion, moving away from process, how policy would now be the conversation.
Mayor and council, you have great discretion in how you want to frame this ordinance. I will say that. You just have to recognize First Amendment rights under the Constitution.
Currently, our municipal code doesn't have a specific proclamation policy with outlines of what will not be issued.
Proclamation ordinance does not give guidelines.
So have one from Salina, they also provided theirs. And it has a lot more guidance. And I think that given that this conversation is continuing beyond just a process, now we're moving to policy, I think it would be prudent to put it out to all the DABs and have DABs talk about what changes they would like to see in policy, what types of proclamations they would like to see or not see. So could that be maybe put so that there's greater community input? There are six district advisory boards. And so six district advisory boards could talk about proclamations. Councilmembers?
I would agree with that. Like we should get more public input.
Councilmember Johnston.
I don't mind going to DAB. But given the spirit of what I have been seeing and hearing regarding this last, or the proclamation in question, I really am not wanting to continue to drag this out. The community of individuals that we had a proclamation for continues to be exposed to some things that are just, you know, nationally it's happening. And I think it's happening more locally just because of some of this conversation. And I'd hate to see that continue at DAB with hateful examples of why we need to change process when, again, I don't think we do. Again, I'll follow what the majority of the council says. But I don't think, I don't think that's right to continue to belabor those points. I also would add to Councilmember Ballard's point, hand signing, and again, your prerogative, Mayor, I think would be actually good because it gives another review. I know that there's two reviews of proclamations now in this process. Means infinite because you can always see and track changes. But, you know, that means the signature is the final. This is in order, it's worded right. And that way there's a review and they sit, I think, on the desk now. They've actually been in the same location, at least since I've been in office. So I just think, you know, there's only three. And if you just have to sign three before a meeting, I don't really think it extends the time to wait for proclamations.
I think that if it's ceremonial, actually, I would prefer to sign them right in front of everyone. So again, I'm not opposed to any of this. I think that, again, I wanted to pay respect to the Wichita City Council as a majority, being the ones that voted for a certain proclamation, that the emphasis should be now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council, and I'm part of that Wichita City Council. And so I think that it does provide even greater sense of authority by the council itself as a group than singling one individual out in a situation where, again, this is not a resolution. So we did not take away rights from people. We did not do anything legally binding, other than do a proclamation to celebrate. And so, again, I'm still going to stick with wanting to make this change moving forward as it did for today's three proclamations. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine if it goes to DAB. I have some of the same concerns Councilmember Johnson has. So I would like, if we do go to DAB, to try and make sure that we keep it as precise and on topic as possible. I respect Vice Mayor Johnston, your, kind of your thoughts as to where the proclamation should come from. That's up for every one of us to kind of decide and parse through as best we can. I'm just going to say, though, my, and I guess maybe I should have spoken a couple of weeks ago, but my thoughts on it is, right now we have a group of people who are under persecution across this country. And a lot of people are scared right now about what's going on. Fire takes place at somebody's house, our city's going to show up. They're not going to ask anybody's gender or identity or anything, they're going to put the fire out. Same thing with PD, same thing if we're filling out potholes. So my thoughts as far as the proclamation was going, let's reaffirm that to everybody. Let's let everybody know that Wichita is a safe and accepting community. And regardless of any differences we might have as far as opinion or any of the other things I mentioned, it's important that we let people know. As Councilmember Glasscock spoke about earlier today, this is the people's building. This is your building, this is your city as well. So those are my thoughts as far as kind of the overall goal of proclamations. I can't think of anything more worthwhile as far as a proclamation, there's no more value than it than something like that. It's always nice when we have recognition for people. But the ones that truly matter, the ones that people pay attention to, are the ones that bring people in and let them feel accepted and let them know that Wichita is our home. So again, everybody's different. Everybody can make up their own mind as far as the purpose of proclamations or why you would approve or deny them. So I just figured I would share mine as well.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll synthesize kind of the comments here and I'd be interested. I know we're not officially taking a vote or policy discussion, but I'm trying to synthesize kind of where we all are at. First off, Bob and I have talked about this probably over the course of the past year. I've had concerns with the proclamation process as a whole, just voting via email. And so I've categorized this in maybe three categories. For first, right now it says I Lilly Wu and the Wichita City Council. I think a compromise is that the mayor and the city council. That way you're not specifically naming any individual, doesn't elevate anybody from this bench. But it also shows a majority of this bench of the mayor and the council support something. I think that's an honor for the community. So that's category number one. And I think maybe a compromise with maybe the suggestions up here as well. Number two, a record in a minute. So I think we could still maybe vote via email, but we at least record it in the consent agenda as Councilman Johnson said. we at least record it in the consent agenda, as Councilman Johnson said, that way we have accountability, the media doesn't have to request this information, they can willingly get it, there's a record of it, but it also makes it easy for all of us, because there's so many proclamation requests to still vote via email, I think that's a compromise solution. And number three, I think having a sponsor, somebody from this bench, I think every proclamation that we've agreed to, somebody from this bench should be willing to sponsor it, that way that individual is responsible, as Councilman Johnson said, for doing the edits with that organization, and so it's not seven of us doing different edits, and then I think that would just be very chaotic in the process. You have one member, it's responsible for doing edits, responsible for the factual, or the facts of it, responsible for the grammatical side, spelling errors, that way you also have the accountability and honor, and I think that also answers the question of who presents from the bench as well. If you have a sponsor of the proclamation, they're the ones that read it to the community because they're the ones that have a vested interest, and also, you know, have been committed to a specific issue. I think that answers all of our concerns, I'd be interested if there are more concerns, but I think that streamlines the process, creates accountability, creates honor, it also makes sure that there's less questions about the process and it's more transparent.
Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you, again, thank you for the robust discussion, I'm fine with the voting however we do it, because I think people need to vote. We don't get to not vote up here, so we shouldn't get to not vote on other things. So, making a hard vote means making a hard vote, and so I want, I think all of us should have to do that. I do, and I know Councilmember Dalton mentioned it, but just also the reading process, you know, how can we make sure that the folks who've asked for the proclamation are, it's done in a respectful way? Because I'm, I'll be honest, I wasn't happy the way it happened a couple of weeks ago, and I don't think it was fair. So, I want to make sure that we are ultimately taking care of our residents and making them feel respected, because this is their building, I've said that for six years. So, happy to move forward, and also happy to move away from this topic, I think we'll figure it out, but we've got people who are sleeping on the streets downtown, and we have a childcare gap, and we have firefighters who are getting cancer, and all the things that we had on the agenda today, that's what I hope we can get our focus back soon. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston?
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilman Hoheisel, which I really, I respect your opinion a lot, I would say to add to your burning house, if someone comes to Guadalupe Clinic, which I run, we don't even ask. And we do have transgender people that come there, we take care of them, it's not even a question on the, we just take care of them. To your point, I agree with that, that's how it should be, for everything. Sometimes I think if we give publicity to something, it gives more reason for the haters to act. So I think, even though it may be good publicity and visibility, it gives more reason for people who don't like that, that subset of people, whoever it is, whether it's Jewish or Palestinian, or whoever it is, gives them more reason to act. And so, that's why I like to focus just on organizations. I respect your opinion, though, thank you. And I do think it should be recorded, how we vote, I agree with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Johnston. Councilmember Glasscock summarized or synthesized the information, however, I will, again, on point number one, I would like to see the language as was read today. I believe that I am a council member on the city council, and when I get to vote here on this bench, I'm equal to each and every one of you six individuals, my vote does not count more, it is one exactly the same as each of you. So, I believe that the language should be changed and should stand as is, as it does not violate any laws, that it should remain as now therefore be it resolved, that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim. On the second point regarding the recording of votes, I do want that on the consent agenda, and including the ones that don't get enough votes. I think it would allow the community to see even the ones that fail, so you can see why it failed, because it didn't get the four votes, and I'd like to see it in the consent agenda each week, because that will allow for keeping up with the amount of proclamations that actually come in. Right now, we really do have nearly a dozen proclamations, including some that are supposed to come before us next week, that still haven't been voted on. And so, again, I would like to see that process be on a weekly basis in the consent agenda, showing the votes on proclamations. And third, regarding the reading of proclamations, I agree that it should be sponsored by a specific council member, and that council member can then have that opportunity, since they're an advocate for it, and someone who's passionate about it, to have the opportunity to read that proclamation, and that, again, provides not only transparency but accountability. So, if that gives some direction, and I see that there's now more comments, but does that provide some direction to staff?
It does, I guess, one just practical question, if no council member is willing to sponsor it, then the proclamation will not go forward, is that the idea?
That would be a process question, so, sorry. So right now, there, none of the proclamations have a sponsor, so this would be a new process to be added to proclamations, where you would say, who would sponsor that bill, or, sorry, that proclamation?
And then be responsible for edits as well, correct?
Yes, correct.
Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you, I will not be supportive of having a council member support it, and I'll give you a personal reason why. My first year on council, there was a proclamation from an organization I've never heard before, and they brought to us National Infertility Awareness Week. As a woman who has suffered from infertility, I didn't know the group existed, but since then, because they came here and raised my awareness, as well as awareness of my council members, I'm now active, I help lead their walk, and I'm involved in their activities all week. So, I would not want a group that maybe is just merging, forming, or doesn't have a huge presence in the community, to maybe not know one of us and not be able to share their voice. This is everyone's city hall, and you shouldn't have to know a council member, or have a council member passionate about your topic for it to be heard, because maybe the people watching, and I'm always surprised how many people do watch, or go back and watch, will learn something. So, the part about having a sponsor is something that's going to be really, really challenging for me to support. I appreciate the idea, I'll engage in the discussion, but I've had, as I mentioned, my own personal example, where it would have limited an opportunity for me, that's something I'm quite proud of now.
Councilmember Johnston?
Thanks, Mayor. Piggybacking on Councilmember Tuttle's point, I too do not agree with the forced sponsorship of proclamations, I think they should come in as they have been, if one of us is passionate enough to want to sponsor and lead that effort, I think that's fine, but I don't think it should have to happen, much like Councilmember Tuttle said, I've learned quite a bit from proclamations over the years of things I didn't know about, and quite frankly, just given how much work I was doing, may not have looked into until meeting with that group and them getting the proclamation. So I think that process should stay the same. I don't agree with the weekly consent agenda, I still, I would like to see the consent agenda at a consent meeting, which is the Fourth Tuesday, so, again, everybody will know, point to the Fourth Tuesday, these are the proclamations that were approved for the month, this is who voted for it, whatever that sheet has, I think we should go there. And again, like Councilmember Tuttle, who took my notes for what I was about to say, hopefully we get all of this taken care of today, and we don't have to continue to talk about proclamations for another couple of weeks.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I agree with my fellow council members on the sponsor, I think that is another barrier, just because, again, you may not know the particular person or find the council member, but that doesn't mean that your request isn't any more valid. And the same thing with the consent agenda, I want to take, I respect the transparency angle, but I also just want to balance that out with staff time, and we have staff doing an awful lot nowadays, and sometimes being overworked leads to issues. I would ask a question, is any of this, do we have to take a vote on any of this, is there any ordinance change attached to this? Not, I mean, not today, not voting today, I'm asking if it'll have to come back with any changes that we have.
These are all process questions, so it's not an actual ordinance change, if I remember correctly.
I will, I will say that the current ordinance and what we're doing are not directly aligning. I would think this is a good time, if there are changes, to go ahead and clean up the ordinance, make it consistent with what you are directing staff to do.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Said it is a good time, or isn't it?
Time, sorry.
Councilmember Glasscock?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't necessarily care if it's on a consent agenda item at the end of the month, as long as it's public. There might be some issue of timeliness, given if somebody had questions about particular proclamations, but maybe it's just if it's, we proclaim them, you know, within a month that's on, I don't necessarily care about that. Regarding the sponsor, I pulled up the proclamation request form online, there's already a box right now that says, are you requesting an official to present? So just check the box if you want an official to present the proclamation. What it could be done is a dropdown where it has one of our names, or to, I think mitigate both your concerns, just say representative from the Wichita City Council, and that way they don't need to know one of us, an individual can do it, and then we can still have an up or down vote, but that way, if there's an individual that's supposed to read it, there could be a sponsor of it, or the sponsor's just the Wichita City Council, if they don't know a particular member, and that way it can be read.
Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you, I have a question for Legal. Jennifer, since this is council member agenda, do we allow public comment today?
Traditionally, no.
Okay, but we could take a vote to allow public comment, is that correct?
You can.
Okay, thank you.
I move to allow public comment regarding this agenda item from the council.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment regarding proclamation process. Oh, sorry, motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-1. We will now open it up for public comment, including from media.
Good afternoon, my name is Todd Ramsey, I live in District One. I was hoping this would come up for public comment. I'm sad that Councilmember Johnson is stepping out at this precise moment, but that's okay. I think as a member of the Wichita community, what is frustrating is to see the controversy around this proclamation being buried under bureaucracy. The issue was not with the process, it was not with the fact that there was an electronic signature that was or was not removed, but there was a direct proclamation made from the bench that was a refusal to read the proclamation. And if there was a desire to have another council member read the proclamation, that conversation could have had before the city council meeting. There was an active political statement made from the bench by not reading that proclamation, when every other proclamation, as long as I've been watching city council meetings, have been read by the mayor, unless there was a specific request to not have it read by the mayor. So it's a little frustrating, as a member of the community, to feel like I'm being gaslit by our mayor. I don't believe that being trans is political, it's not a political statement, it's a reality that there are individuals who exist in our community that simply want to be acknowledged as individuals in our community, it's not a political statement, and they're not a subset of our community who aren't making a positive impact on our community, and it is infuriating to hear a council member make that argument. We elected all of you to represent all of us, regardless of whether or not you agree with our opinions, with our agendas, with our lifestyle choices, and a proclamation is either a big deal, or it's not. And the fact that you are spending more than an hour talking about proclamations, if it's not a big deal, then what are we doing here? If they don't really matter, if they're purely ceremonial, what are we doing? We're trying to bury what actually happened last Tuesday, or two Tuesdays ago, and that is so frustrating. Now, Mayor, in your defense, I do believe the proclamation was put up as a test to you, frankly, and that's frustrating as well. We live in a very divided community, and we can't ignore that fact. But we are not bringing our community together any better by having this ridiculous conversation, by taking it out to DABs to talk about proclamations. I mean, these are ceremonial acknowledgements of organizations and human beings who are in our community, that's all that they are, they hold no bearing, they hold no weight, they are simply ceremonial. And the process maybe isn't as transparent as it could be, the solution of putting them, the votes, in the agenda solves that. No need for a change in the ordinance, no need for a change in the language, no need for more time spent on this topic, let's just keep doing proclamations the way we've been doing them, there's never been an issue until two weeks ago. And so let's get back to the reality of solving the problems that actually matter in this community, and representing the people who exist in this community. Now, Mayor, I respect your perspective, I understand that you have your view on what happened, but I tell you, as a citizen, the issue wasn't that you or did or did not sign the proclamation, I need to be very clear about that. And there is no frustration in the community about the process of how the signature got removed, it was the fact that you made the statement from the bench, that you were not going to read that proclamation. Now, you have the excuse, or the reasoning, that you wanted to give it to the fore, that's never been done before from the bench. And so it felt, whether it was or not, like a political statement being made from the bench, and I just want to make sure that you understand that, from someone who is not one of your foes, but is simply a concerned citizen here in Wichita. So thank you, I think this is a ridiculous conversation, that has taken way more time than is worth having, for a process that it maybe can be refined, but is not as broken as it seems like we're wanting to make it out to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, I was pretty sure you were not going to take public comment on that, but, so this is not as prepared as in the past. I agree, I think that continuing to politicize this, whether that's here, or in the media later, or what's been in the media the past three weeks, is doing a disservice to the entire community. Everyone is welcome here in Wichita, and the spin here is also really, literally making my head spin, because those votes were the worst kept secret. I was told at your mayor address before leaving what the votes were. So it just seems like we're focusing on the wrong things, I do agree it should be transparent, it also kind of sounds like it's not really a broken process, so it's the misdirection for me, it's the inconsistency for me, I gotta say, the sponsorship idea sounds terrible. I get, I think I get the intention behind it, but I'm someone who, on city council, I think I could talk to most of you, but for instance, on like Derby City Council, County Commission, I don't think I could find a sponsor for some of the things that I would want to be said. And so that is, again, I hate to use this word, but that is actually segregating people, you're segregating people that don't have a friend, or don't even feel comfortable, we already saw someone today that didn't even feel comfortable speaking because of the vibes that we put out two weeks ago. So I don't want to see us go more in that direction. And I just, I really just have one question for you, Lilly, and I'm trying so hard, as a member of your political party, to like not, like I really don't want to, I don't want to get involved, because I am rooting for you, so I just want to ask one question. Let's say all of your changes take place, like we remove your name, we sign by whatever, every single, even the sponsor thing, let's say it all happens, this proclamation comes up next week, do you come down here and read it or sign it, or no?
I did not vote for it.
Right, but...
Therefore, it would still require four votes.
Right.
So, again, that is the process that this is going through, I will be very clear, I did not vote for it.
Right.
But I did not vote against it either.
Right.
And, again, and to address Todd really quickly, I yielded the floor to four individuals who cared more deeply about an issue, and had them have the opportunity to go and, go ahead and read that proclamation, and I believe that that's why the sponsor process is so important, I think that it is, it provides one of the council members, or even the mayor, to say, I care deeply about a subject, and I want to speak on behalf of it. I know that Councilmember Tuttle was very passionate about firefighters, and she wanted to read, and I, again, it was drafted by staff, if it would have been drafted by the council member, and I think sponsored by the council member, it would be a great opportunity for a council member to also have the opportunity to read, and I think that that's where we want to be, where we have the opportunity to not just give the mayor the chance to read proclamations, but also council members who feel passionate about a specific subject. Councilmember Tuttle?
Oh, I thought Johnson was in front of me, sorry. Councilmember Johnson, I'm sorry. Then, and again, we are getting so far into the weeds, and, and I'm so sorry for the community who's watching and here with us today, but thank you for being patient, um, and hopefully learning a little bit more about how your city operates, right? Um, but something new was just brought up that, um, with a proclamation for a topic that I'm very passionate about, I was in a meeting with staff, and I said that I was going to draft the proclamation, and staff said, no, we'll do it for you, because that's our function. Had I known I couldn't read it, if I didn't write it myself, then I would have written it myself. So if that's going to be the guardrail, that if a council member gets to read a proclamation for something they care about, they have to write and submit the proclamation, I'm fine with that. Just like with anything, if I know the rules, I'll follow it. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I know Councilmember Tuttle would be fine with that. I think if it's an issue that we are working on, and that is an opportunity to read it offsite or here, we should. So even if council were to ask staff to draft something. Um, but to your point, I've, I've actually been trying to avoid this, but it, I think the frustrating thing for me, and why I wish this whole conversation would go away, is we had three proclamations that day. We only had an issue on one, and we're now talking about it two weeks later because of one proclamation. And honestly, I feel like all of these changes come from that, because we have not had an issue at all up until that one proclamation. And even now, you didn't get a yes or no. So, uh, again, that's why I keep saying, I really hope this is over with today. We get some recommendations from the direction we've gave staff, and we can put this to bed, because the connection's going to continue to be made from, we're making all these changes based on one proclamation of three that we read that day. Everyone knows what it is, um, the name of it, and I think that connection's going to continue to be made. That's all I see on social media, is that connection. It's not about a broken process. This conversation today, although I don't mind some of the changes, I'm not one that says it's the way we've always done it, so we need to keep doing it. I'm open to, to hearing that, but what we heard today is that the process is not broken. There's several opportunities for review from staff. There's some updates that could be made, should be made. So again, like I said, the tracking sheet is a good one. It brings us into 2025, and not have the word in it says, printing off and signing by different council members, which have been changed to emails. So the tracking sheet, those things are good, but honestly, this whole conversation continues to center around one proclamation, and all of these changes is coming from that one thing. And I, again, I just hope that from all the conversations today, we get to a point where, where they're synthesized down to three items. Also, not the biggest fan of item three from Councilmember Glasscock, but if we get down to three specific changes, and we look at ordinance changes or council policy, that would be good. But I hope that this is one of our final discussions. We don't go out to dab. I don't want to see, um, this group of Wichitaans continue to be the target of what I'm continuing to see and even see on YouTube right now. That type of stuff is disgusting to me, and I just really hate that Wichitaans are being subject to that, because we keep talking about proclamations.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And to answer your question, I would sign if it passed by majority, just like I, again, did not deny or abstain from signing a document.
Yeah. And I'm clear on that, and I appreciate you like really hammering that, which you have every right to. I was really just playing the hypothetical, and I appreciate your answer. Thanks, guys.
We'll continue with public comment.
Hello again. Um, once again, I'm Molly Stevenson, and I'm teacher and operator at a small independent school here in Wichita. Um, I want to thank, um, Mr. Hoheisel for your remarks earlier about inclusion and safety and proclaiming that loudly. Um, I do think that's fundamentally important. Um, being seen is a fundamental human right, and for us as a place, and as a city, and a state that wants to retain people who belong here, saying out loud that we celebrate that you're present here is important. Um, that you're welcome here is important. Um, trans people are not a special interest group. They're people. Um, they are people that want to be mostly just treated with human rights, you know, and not to be othered and ostracized. Visibility is the very first step in representation. Representation is what you all are here for. Um, you all understand, like, the importance of representing the people in your community. Visibility has to happen before real representation can happen. So proclamations like that one should just be a celebration of, I know you're in our community, I see you, and I care about you. Um, I would like you to consider that, particularly going forward, when you're deciding what is worthy of a proclamation or not. I think your citizenry, um, who they are, what they need from you, is probably one of the most worthy things you could celebrate. Having a group be acknowledged when they have been historically not acknowledged, and when they are facing so much federally, um, and at the state level too, about the simple existence of their life, is a really, really powerful thing. For you to say that Wichita is a place that acknowledges that you belong and are valuable here, means a lot to a people group that really just wants to exist. You can take that same concept and apply it to any other marginalized people group. We have a culture right now that is erasing giant parts of our history, um, our narrative, where we're whitewashing over things in the way that we share stories and acknowledge people's contributions to our society. Um, as a teacher, I talk a lot about this with my students. How and who gets to tell the stories of our people is so important to our identity as a nation, but really also as a city, right? This whole issue is going to be a defining issue for you all, um, about how you relate to the people in the city, right? We're talking about proclamations, and I agree, Representative Johnson, this is like ridiculous to be here two weeks later, having the same conversation, but it is kind of a catalyst, right, of what are our value systems as a city around people, right? Who do we care about? How do we show, um, that Wichita is a place of belonging? So I think this gives you an opportunity as a council, um, in your procedures, to affirm or not affirm who you are as leaders going forward. Are you representatives of people who may not be very visible without something like a proclamation? Um, thank you for hosting us today and hearing our students. We, in our setting, are very consistently wanting to make sure that our kids know that they belong in all the spaces. We don't want our kids to want to leave Wichita. We don't want our kids to want to leave Kansas. We want them to be valued here. We want them to be heard. Spaces like this where they're welcome definitely gives them that opportunity. But to hear, to hear things like recognizing people groups is maybe not the function of the council, sends a message that I don't know that I'm comfortable with as a teacher. And I hope as you sit with that as a council, you can also maybe not be comfortable with that as well, because what are you saying to the people you represent? So, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. I will just address, I think, a couple of items. Councilmember Johnson and many others are saying they want this to be the last time we talk about it, but I already have the agenda for April 8th, which is next Tuesday, and five people on the public agenda, which has all five spots, are five students from Wildflower Community School to talk about transgender validation. So I know that everyone is saying that they want to move on, but I, I don't believe so, uh, given that it will come back up next week.
Of course.
And so if that is the case, I think that, again, we're trying to allow the community to have more public input, which is why I mentioned the district advisory boards, but if the district advisory boards do not want to hear this, we can keep it at the council level and make decisions as council. Um, but again, I think law department would like to have some clarification moving forward, so it can be captured, so that everyone has the same consistency.
Sure.
Um, I believe the last time the process of proclamations was last revisited, city manager, when was that?
I don't know.
Uh, Mayor, Council Jennifer, I can't say when the process was last revisited. I believe it's been these 10 years since the ordinance has been amended, but I don't know about the process.
Thank you. So a decade. I appreciate it.
I, I do want to say that I do very much appreciate the conversation about transparency and accountability, very much. Um, I know that we speak a lot about that in our space, that accountability is something that we should expect from our elected representatives, and so to put that out in front, um, I'm grateful for that.
Molly. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And, and when I said that I hope this is the last time we talk about it, I know realistically that may not happen, but definitely don't want anyone who wants to come to talk to us about whatever they want to talk about. So all are welcome at your city hall. So see you next week. Thank you.
We'll be here, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and, and my comments were mainly from us as electeds. I'm happy to hear from you all next week as well, but I think it's important to clarify, and I'm not speaking for the five young people, but a lot of, um, the continued discussion is people responding to what's being said in the media. It's not, it's not the proclamation, it's the continued attacks against our trans residents, our trans neighbors. And a lot of that is disgusting, and a lot of the ones who are willing and able are speaking up and speaking out. And we saw the emotions of one person today who wanted to speak, but it was just so, um, emotional for them that they could not, and the nervousness of being up in front of the elected body. Um, I have also long felt, I, this, this conversation continues to come back to, and I, I don't like bringing up staff, but the clerical error piece of this conversation is something that people continue to talk about, which is frustrating, because I know the proclamations are reviewed. They're reviewed before the weekend, they're reviewed before the Tuesday. That's not a staff thing. That's us reading it. That's me. If I don't go read the proclamation that I'm supposed to read on a Saturday, or at some event, that's on me that I didn't do it. And I don't, I don't feel with continued reviews that that is a staff thing or a clerical thing. And when it comes to us reading these proclamations, agreeing to proclamations, while for me, it's an approve, I read it, I know that every time I say approve, if the council approves, that the group or person requesting it is going to feel great. I see how people react when, I'll speak for myself, when I show up, I definitely see how people react when more of us show up at an event, or, um, to some meeting that someone's having. And while I look at the elected role, as I ran to help and move issues forward and try to be of assistance to the community, there are just people who want their electeds to see them, to hear them, to acknowledge them. We represent everyone, even the folks we disagree with, and these proclamations are a great way to do it. If we proclaim tomorrow Purple Tie Day, people who love purple ties would be like, man, the city council actually recognizes us. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
And while I might think it's just approved, and that's, that's okay, like it, these things are a big deal to the people requesting them. I remember when I met my first elected official, Carl Brewer, and I, I had a bone to pick with him, but we had a conversation about an issue with the city, and I was like, wow, an elected official cares. Cares enough to come in here. I remember my first proclamation. I still have it hanging up at my nonprofit office to this day, and I'm a council member. We give those out. Like, all of those things are impactful, and they mean something. And if we are considering in any way, shape, or form, taking away from that, making it harder for residents to get that, I think that's the wrong direction for us to go. Again, I don't think the process is broken, and it all comes down to one proclamation. If that proclamation wouldn't happen, we wouldn't even be talking about process today. So I really hope, when I say the conversation is over with, it's over with from the elected body, if the community has something to say, they have every right, because it's been in the media for two weeks, and one group of our residents continues to bear the brunt of the negativity coming from that. No one else is. So, my thoughts.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench.
I think as of right now, there are several, uh, directions that we could take, and I've mentioned, um, back to the hereby proclaim portion of the proclamation. I still stand that it should say the Wichita City Council. I would agree with Councilmember Ballard in having the opportunity to sign them physically, and I think they should be signed right here in front of everyone. And so I would like to see that also happen. So that's one. On the record of votes, I still believe that you should be able to see them, um, on the consent agenda, and that should be a process question, maybe actually getting input from staff, asking what is most feasible for staff to be able to provide all those votes and all the different proclamations, because there are proclamations that do not get four votes, and so they automatically never come before the community, but they have been voted on, or lack thereof votes. So I'd like to see those votes weekly, but if that's not feasible every other week, but it should be on the consent agenda, and it would be an opportunity again for media to be able to see without having to quora that information. And so that does provide transparency. And number three, I still believe that a sponsor for a proclamation would allow for someone who cares deeply about a subject to have the opportunity to read these proclamations. Um, I know that Councilmember Tuttle today, uh, came down when we talked about child abuse, and she has been a big advocate for childcare, as well as, um, she's on that task force. Um, if she would have been the sponsor in this situation, she could read that proclamation itself. So I think that there are opportunities for other members of the council to have the chance to read. Um, and so those are the three suggestions, actually, four suggestions, that I think should be carried forward. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to try to maybe answer Councilwoman Tuttle and Councilman Johnson's question about the sponsor, I do think it's good to have a member on there, so we can worry about edits. Maybe it's each one of us have the opportunity to do it, and then if, for some reason, someone doesn't want to request a sponsorship from us, or it comes from the manager's office, so it's listed as from the manager's office or from the council office. Um, so then we still vote on it, and then they can be responsible for the editing language and working with the individual. But that way, there's still the opportunity for someone, if they don't know us, as Olivia had said, that they can still present the proclamation. But then there's the opportunity for us, if we have a special interest in whatever's being presented, to also do it. So maybe it's, the mayor council's an option, and then maybe just the city council office is an option, if they don't seek a sponsorship from one of us.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I like it in theory. I just, I don't think in practice, that's, I think it should be optional for us to want to be a sponsor of it. Um, process thus far, as outlined in the presentation, is the special assistant to the mayor, and the mayor kind of do the final review of all the language and grammatical stuff. Um, but each of us see the proclamation anyway. So I mean, if we have some changes, we could do that there. I don't think there needs to be a named council sponsor, uh, unless one of us wants to, and then I think that would change it. But other than that, I think people should be free to submit whatever proclamations they want. Oftentimes, it's something that we can learn about, and, you know, maybe make a lifetime connection to this, some new information, or something that we know about.
I forgot to address one of the comments that Councilmember Hoheisel had, which is, we vote on proclamation language that has been submitted by the requister, but those then get edited, because I remember specifically, just last week, I had one proclamation that had 10 whereas comments, and they had to be condensed down to four whereas paragraphs. And so in that situation, you guys didn't get to see the actual language that got voted on. So really, it, back to the sponsor idea, you won't get to see the proclamation until it's presented, whereas if you have a sponsor, that individual, for instance, in this case, it's about child, um, child abuse, Councilmember Tuttle could have taken that lead, and she would have edited the proclamation and then sent it out as an actual vote. So right now, we're still not having a good process, I don't believe, with how these proclamations come in. Councilmember Hoheisel, you were the one that brought up, if a specific requister is asking for certain language, and that language is not- for certain language, and that language is not part of that proclamation, when it's being edited, especially when they're very lengthy, to condense it down to four, you might take away maybe something that was very important to someone else. So again, back to the sponsorship.
I agree, but that also could be something that is, it's currently being dealt with by staff. You know, it's just more a question of where do we see it along the process? That's more what it is. Sponsorship, I mean, I like options. You know, Councilmember Johnson talked about some options. Councilmember Glasscock talked about options. I'm okay with options. I'm just more, again, I don't want to put additional barriers there in case there is no council member that necessarily feels like they should sponsor something, especially if it's not requested on behalf of the individuals. That's the concern there is, where do they go if they don't feel like there is somebody that wants to sponsor? Or maybe there isn't somebody who wants to sponsor but still thinks, okay, this is something I can vote for. So I suppose that's more the concern there.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I like the idea of you signing them, you know, at the bench or however you want to sign them, but signing them as opposed to the electronic signature, I'm not loving the sponsorship just because, as mentioned before by the speaker, if someone doesn't know one of us well enough to lean on us to help them through that process, or, you know, have us advocate for them or whatever, I certainly don't want to discourage anyone from submitting a proclamation. So I'm okay with the rest of your suggestions minus the sponsorship.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Can we get a mayor's fountain tip pen for the signature?
A ceremonial pen. Does that give enough direction for staff moving forward?
Mayor, I hate to bring this up, but I haven't heard consensus on the wording of proclamation. I hear your consent, you want city council, and I just, I've heard different opinions, so I just, I think that's the only outstanding issue. And by the way, I think we can bring the vote back to you every week. And frankly, I get a little worried about trying to get it all on the consent at the end of the month and making sure we don't drop the ball and actually have somebody compile it. I think if we just do it while we're on the fly, so to speak, it will be easier.
Thank you, city manager. So right now, if you go back to that slide, so the only portion that does not currently have consensus is this portion of the language that removes the mayor but allows for the Wichita City Council to remain as the body that gives a proclamation. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. If it is weekly, okay. I was just trying to save staff work. I'm also not going to die on that hill. I don't think it should change, but if that's the will of the body and I add to consensus, Wichita, whatever is proposed here, now there be it for resolved that the Wichita City Council does proclaim, I'm okay with it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
I'm totally fine with that.
We've run out of time and cut off the system.
Yeah, I know, right? That's fine. No, I'm totally fine with it, and if we're going to get to start reading proclamations now for work that we're doing, then it takes, you don't have to, you know, remove it yourself because I always put a little sticky note over it just to make sure I didn't say it on accident. So I'm totally fine with it being resolved that the Wichita City Council does proclaim, da-da-da-da-da.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. Just so I understand, I feel like we are all okay with it, but that was already projected in the proclamations you read today, the changes.
That's legal first.
Okay, I just, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just don't like those changes being made before we had the conversation today.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
I'm okay with the change.
City manager, does that provide consensus?
Got what I need.
Thank you. I think we are done with proclamations unless anyone else wants to speak on the subject. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll begin with appointments. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Patricia Joseph to my district advisory board.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint Geneva Chambers, Jesse Wickdahl, Ariel Kirk, Noemi Ibarra, Mike Loop, Jerry McGraw, and Rick Lindsey to my district advisory board, and appoint for the first time Tim McQuarrie and John Buck, and also reappoint Amaya Williams to the youth position on the district advisory board.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint to the district advisory board Sean Baumann, Lamont Anderson, Sierra Scott, Jennifer Salvo, Mary Whiteside, Wendy Carter, and Dave Sanford.
I move to appoint, approve all the appointments from council members.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, sorry, we'll just open it up for comments from council members. Do we have any comments? Councilmember Johnson.
I hereby proclaim the proclamations are over.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Second. I'd just like to invite everybody out. Noon on Saturday will be the season launch for Cowtown, 75th anniversary, so quite a perspective, quite a time. I thank everybody for all the work they've done. It's definitely an integral part of our community. So hopefully we have some good weather then. Come on out, it'll be a rootin', tootin', good time.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Johnson, I thought you wanted proclamations to die. You keep bringing it up.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I'd just like to invite everyone out to the annual Schools Out Powwow. That's on Saturday, Saturday at 2:00 p.m.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. On a serious note, I've done it privately, but also just want to congratulate Reggie Davidson, our new parking rec director. Glad to see him there. He does a wonderful job, and looking forward to how Wichita Parks will continue to improve under his leadership.
And I believe that there are two breakfasts this weekend in Council District One and Council District Four. Again, those are Saturday at 9:30 a.m. More information at both of their District One and District Four Facebook pages.
Yep. This week is at Edgemore. Normally, it's at Atwater, but we're over at Edgemore to see all the new improvements, and we've got a pretty famous person as our guest. His name is Robert Layton, city manager of the city of Wichita.
District Four's is at Auburn Hill Clubhouse, and I think we're having Ziggy's Breakfast Pizza, so some of the other food, I know.
All right. I see no further council member comments. I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, six one. Have a great day.